I spoke with my colleague, reporter Mike Schmidt, about the appointment of a new special counsel to investigate Donald Trump. So Mike, tell us about Jack Smith and why the Department of Justice thinks he's the right person for this special counsel job.
So Jack Smith has had a career that at least looks like he is the fair-minded, hard-charging federal prosecutor right out of Central Casting. And that's what the Justice Department wants us to think of him as. In the 90s, after graduating from Harvard Law School, he started working in the Manhattan District Attorney's Office. He moved up to become a federal prosecutor in Brooklyn. He established himself as someone who had a lot of confidence but was fair-minded and even described by some as creative at trying to bring cases. He rose up to be in charge of the Justice Department's Public Integrity Unit in Washington, the part of the department that looks at the very thorny questions of whether politicians committed wrongdoing.
Mike, I'm curious which investigations that Smith has overseen feel especially relevant for the job he's about to take now?
Well, there is nothing that can prepare you for this. This is an investigation and an endeavor that will forever change his life. So nothing can teach you what it's like to investigate a former president who's running for president, who's going to do everything he can to demonize you. That said, he oversaw the prosecution of the governor of Virginia, Bob McDonald, on corruption charges. He also oversaw the investigation of the former top Republican in the House, Tom DeLay, an investigation that ended up with the Justice Department not bringing charges. He oversaw the prosecution of a Republican member of Congress from Arizona, a case that Donald Trump ultimately would pardon the member for when Trump was president.
Interesting.
These are complicated cases that looked at politicians, wrongdoing of politicians.
Okay, so Mike, what has been the reaction so far to the appointment of Jack Smith?
Not surprisingly, Trump has attacked him, depicted him as a member of the Left, and used it to fuel his grievances.
So exactly the script we'd expect Trump to follow, he's following on this. So what exactly happens now? Do we have any sense which of these two investigations Smith is likely to be most focused on? And which of them has the strongest chance of being wrapped up first and potentially producing a criminal charge against Trump?
My guess is he'll be focused equally on both of them. The one that has moved faster is the Mar-a-Lago classified documents investigation. The evidence in that case seems to be a little clearer, the law is a little more straightforward, and former federal prosecutors would say that a decision there would be something that would be easier for a prosecutor to make than the more complicated January 6th case. But I don't think this decision should be interpreted as a clear-cut sign that charges are going to be brought. As I've learned in covering all these investigations of Trump, it's very difficult to charge someone like a former president of the United States. And in fact, I think that as we sit here today, we should be prepared for the fact that maybe in neither of these cases, charges are brought. And that's actually another reason why some people think it was a prudent thing for Garland to appoint a special counsel.
Explain that.
Because if these investigations end up with the prosecutors concluding that they do not have enough to charge, then a significant portion of the country, the Left, Democrats, anti-Trump Republicans, who have already made up their mind about Trump's criminality, are going to cry foul. And by having a special counsel, Garland will be able to say, this longtime federal prosecutor who stared down war criminals in the Hague, has looked at this question, looked at the evidence and the facts, and made a decision that there's not enough to charge. And that could potentially give Garland just a bit more of a shield as he tries to explain why the department hasn't indicted Trump.
Interesting. So one way to look at the special counsel that Garland just appointed is that it's designed to insulate him and, by extension, the Biden administration, from blowback if and when they do decide to prosecute Trump, Biden's former and now current rival. But another way it could insulate Garland, you're saying, is if they decide not to prosecute Trump. And there's inevitably blowback from Democrats and from the Left.
Yes, but the more that we go through this, the more that I realize that Garland is probably screwed. Because no matter what is decided, whether Trump is charged or not, a large segment of the population will think it's wrong and politically motivated. And a special counsel can't solve the problem at the heart of the moment, which is that you have the Justice Department under a sitting president investigating his rival for the presidency. By nature, that looks and feels political. And there's really no way around that perception, whether it's Garland conducting this investigation, a special counsel, or Elliot Ness. Having a special counsel is probably Garland's best tool, but I'm not sure anyone thinks it's sufficient.
Well, Mike, thank you very much. As always, we appreciate it.
Thanks for having me.
Mike Schmidt is an investigative reporter at The New York Times.
The Daily is supported by Nuts.com, a family-owned business since 1929. Satisfying holiday needs from half-dry apricots to bourbon pecans, custom holiday trays to festive tins and baskets, and every flavor of happy. Learn more at Nuts.com. And by The Financial Times, cutting through the complexity of global politics to help readers make sense of it all at FT.com/newagenda. And by American Public Media.
The Daily is powered by the journalism of The New York Times and is distributed by APM, American Public Media. You can go deeper into the stories you hear on The Daily at NYTimes.com/TheDaily. That's it for The Daily. I'm Michael Bobardo. See you tomorrow.
Have you checked out Radio IQ's podcast, Memory Wars?
In my generation, you aren't really proud of being German because we still feel all that guilt.
Even if you've already heard it, we've got new material coming out soon. To stay up to date on that and more, sign up for the Memory Wars newsletter. Just go to our website, RadioIQ.org.
Radio IQ is broadcasting in digital on WVTF Roanoke, WRIQ Charleston-Erichmond, WURV Richmond, WVTU Charlottesville, WVTW Charlottesville.
Somebody had to move my agenda. Where in the world? I left it right up here. That's this afternoon. I'm looking for my script. It was here. No, that's not it. This is 2:00. I didn't put it in there. Yeah, that's 2:00. Oh, that's 2:00. I don't know why this happened to me. Yeah, that's it. That's it. You're right. I don't know. Somebody's jail. Could've come find that.
You know why I'm scrambling, right? Because I feel like you're looking at me. Right?
I don't touch somebody in jail.
I felt like he was trying to say I moved his...
Okay, I got you. Okay, I got you. All right, I got you. Yeah, I could always use your help. Been here for 20 years. I got you. All right, let's see. This agenda has changed some from what it used to be. It's like a continuation or something, right down here, at the bottom, you know? Yeah, he could do a separate one at 2:00. This is a continuation. Who has the black ink pen real quick? I got one, thank you. I had to hit my gather night. Everybody quiet, everybody go. to order, and I will ask our clerk, Ms. Susie McCord, to please call the roll.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Here.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Here.
Mr. Beszczich?
Here.
Mr. Cobb?
Here.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Here.
Ms. Price?
Here.
Mayor Lee?
Here. And a call, Mr. President. Now, those of you that want to, there's some seats empty up front, but I know how it is, the same thing happens in church, they fill up in the back. Nobody wants to get on the front row, but well, any of those that want to have a seat, you're welcome to do so. The invocation tonight will be delivered by Councilmember Joseph L. Cobb, and I will follow him with the pledge of allegiance. Joe, please stand for the invocation.
Oh God, the weight of these last 48 hours feels unbearable. Yesterday morning, during Transgender Day of Remembrance, news broke that yet another mass shooting, a hate crime, took place at Club Q in Colorado Springs, killing five and injuring 25. This in addition to the nearly 70 transgender beloveds, disproportionately people of color, who have been murdered in the United States in the last year. And then yesterday afternoon, during Roanoke Remembers, hearing the names of our loved ones who have died this past year by gun violence. Brooks, Ty Ray, William, Arnez, Jonathan, Ulysses, Samuel, Grover, Berkeley, Chris, Leanne, John, Mahdi, Octavius, Demarian, Jeremy, Devonte, and others we name now in our hearts. Oh God, bring healing, bring hope, comfort us with your love. Amen.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Cobb. Let me just say, welcome, everybody. Let me say that council meetings will be televised live and replayed on RV TV Channel 3 on Thursdays at 7:00 PM and Saturdays from 10:00 AM to 6:00 to 5:00 PM, and video-streamed through Facebook Live at Facebook.com/RoanokeVA. Council meetings are offered with closed captioning for the deaf or hard of hearing. All right, the first order of business tonight is for us to come out of closed session, so I should get a motion, Ms. Moon Reynolds?
I move with respect to any closed meeting just concluded, that each member of City Council in attendance, certified to the best of his or her knowledge, that one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and two, only such public business matters as we identified in any motion by which any closed meeting was convened, were held, I mean, was heard, discussed, or considered by the members of council in attendance. Second?
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please call a roll on that?
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Here. Aye, I'm sorry.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Beszczich?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye. Thank you all. All right, the first order of business tonight is presentations and acknowledgements. And let me say that I'm going to move, look at the agenda, and I am going to move and add to the presentations and acknowledgements the Omega Sci-Fi Fraternity Incorporated, and their representatives are here today, and I want to move them to right under the presentations and acknowledgements. So we look forward to hearing you then, Omega Sci-Fi. All right. Rachel? Rachel, hell, is she here?
Mayor Lee, Vice Mayor Whiteboy, members of council. Once again, we're very honored to have before you some of our young, talented artists within our fair city that spread the word of fire prevention. As you know, that October was Fire Prevention Month, and we really took that to heart in making sure that we keep our citizens safe. But no more, no person did it more, better than the young folks that we're going to recognize today. The talent that we have is just phenomenal. We'll tell you that we did our recognition and awards banquet last week at Station 5, and the station was full of people and talent that we have within our community. And we just want to share a little bit with that you today and acknowledge those people, those individuals who came to be recognized. I think we're going to recognize everybody, if it's okay, just to kind of read their names, because they come from all over our city and all different schools. But before we get started, I really do want to recognize all the school art teachers. If you would please stand. I will tell you, without them, this will not be possible. Our partnership with the school system has just been phenomenal. So without any further delay, and I know these young folks would like to get their artwork and be recognized, I'll turn it over to Rachel or to Dave Quinn.
All right. Good evening, everybody. We'll wait for the mayor to meet us up here. We did awards at a kindergarten to second grade group, a third grade to fifth grade group, and then a middle school group, and then we have some other, some other awards, including the always exciting Chief's Choice Award, which Chief Hoback always spends quite a bit of time on. And then a new award this year, our new Fire Marshal Becky Smith, back there in the back, she actually had a Fire Marshal's Award this year. So we will get started with our first-place winner from the kindergarten to second grade group from Roanoke Academy of Math and Science, Muhana Babaker. Muhana, if you'd come up, please.
I sometimes feel like I should be paying you. Oh, here's a photo.
And get his picture, Mayor. Let him hold his picture.
Yes.
Yeah, there we go. Yeah, there we are.
Oh, that's great.
Not here this evening, second-place winner from Fairview, Diadungy. Third-place winner from Granton Court, Lyric Patterson. And then first place for the third to fifth grade group, Genesis Portillo from Preston Park. Genesis, are you here? Second place for third and fifth grade, not here tonight, Kaya Mohammed from Roanoke Academy of Math and Science. And Adrienne Augusto from Morningside was our third-place winner. Middle school winners, none of those were able to be with us this evening. Piper Lynch from Madison, Kalen Johnson from Madison, and Ruby Kahoon from Madison. Chief's Choice Award winner, Kaya Mohammed, again, from Roanoke Academy. The Fire Marshal's Choice winner, Leila Vasquez from Breckenridge. Honorable mention from Monterey, fifth grade, Ava Lewis Wright. Ava? Amarius Warley from Fairview is here, fifth grade. Another honorable mention winner, Amarius. Nawal Haroon is not here from Fallon, okay, okay, fourth grade from Fallon Park, Nawal Haroon. Ms. Deal is here, taking that award on behalf of her. Another honorable mention from Garden City Elementary, Emma DePalma, fifth grade. And then our final winner, also not here this evening, is Leila Young, seventh grade from Woodrow Wilson Middle School.
Thank you. And I want to, let's give Chief Hoback and his staff, and Stone, Deputy Jim, and Fire Marshal Rebecca Smith, thank you all for coming out and thank you for what you do. This is a great event, and I tell you, I love this because sometimes we get a lot of news about kids and what they're not doing, but this is something good, and so we'd like to do this here. Councilmembers, do you all have any comments or anything you want to make? Ms. Price?
You know there was no way I would not have a comment. As I said to Chief Hoback and to several of the parents back there and the students just before we got started, this is my absolute favorite, favorite event that is sponsored by City Council, and I just want to congratulate all the students that participated. As the mayor said, we hear so much negative news, we just gave mention to some of the horrific events that have happened and transpired over the last couple of weeks. So isn't it great that we can recognize our babies and just tell them that we really appreciate the great work that they're doing? And Mr. Mayor, if we could just ask the parents and the teachers and principals if they could just stand or wave their hands so that we can recognize you as well.
All right, thank you all. Thank you, Chi. Thank you. All right, now, Rachel? With community risk reduction.
Rachel's our FBI, but she's with us, Mr. Mayor.
All right, well, I have Ms. Kendrick?
All right. So you guys all know me, but for those of you who do not, my name is Katie Hedrick. I am the Community Inclusion Coordinator out of the Office of Community Engagement. It's been a long day already. So one of the most rewarding parts of my job thus far has been leading my city academy. So for... been leading our My City Academy. So for those of you that were participants in My City Academy, if you guys will just come up front and stand with me so everyone can see you. So for the past four weeks, these ten participants have given up their Saturdays to improve their knowledge of city departments and services, to learn more about community resources available in Roanoke, and to develop skills for helping others. Together, we visited the Police Department, the Public Works Service Center, libraries, the municipal building, the Mill Mountain Star, and the Belmont Fallon Target area. We learned about each other and we learned from each other, developed tools for advocacy and asking empowering questions, and built our confidence to interact with city departments and officials. As graduates of the City of Roanoke's very first cohort of My City Academy, the residents you see before you tonight have learned to recognize and respond to the effects of trauma in their own behavior and the behavior of others. They know who to call when houses are unsafe or when interpreters are needed. They know how to build an emergency kit and how to best receive alerts from the city. They're informed in the best ways to make referrals to community service agencies and how to apply for a job with the city. And they can teach their friends, neighbors, and communities these skills. We have a couple that weren't able to join us tonight, but the ten graduates have built a bond and a support network with one another. They've encouraged each other, asked questions, and stretched their understanding, and eaten grilled cheese sandwiches for the very first time. For me personally, the past four weeks have been a pleasure, and I'm so honored to call all of these residents my friends. I'm so proud of the work that they have done and that they will continue to do to help, support, and teach their communities. It's our absolute privilege to have them living here in the City of Roanoke with us. So I'm going to take just a second and recognize each of them with a certificate. And then we have two of our graduates that are going to speak very briefly. We may have to cut them off, but they're going to give just a very brief word about what this program has meant to them. You guys are not standing in alphabetical order, so it may take me a second to give you your certificate, but we definitely want to recognize the hard work that they have done and the knowledge and the information that they're going to be giving out to those in their community. So Wally Amon is first. We had a couple of participants unable to join us tonight, but we had a group of ten all together. So Wally, if you want to speak next for a moment, and then Babakar will... Oh, we're going to take a picture fast, sorry. I'm not good at the public...
Yes. Yes.
It was only represented through...
Yes.
Going to be shortly. By the name of Myers, our presenter here. My name is Wally to work in an air force in Afghanistan and working as a team with the US Air Force Army and NATO allies in Afghanistan. Unfortunately, the government collapsed last year, so we left the country, and the US government brought down here. Finally, I'm so glad I am now part of this society here in Roanoke. When we came in Roanoke, we really appreciate people who helped us a lot here. And we got the academic for four years, four weeks. We didn't know anything about the offices, the governments. Honestly, that was really useful for us. Now we know all offices, what they are doing in Roanoke. It was really grateful, useful for us, especially for people who is really come from other countries with a different culture, with differing everything. It was really useful. And especially thanks for Katie. She worked a lot to prepare this all stuff for us. Once again, thanks, everybody. I'm really glad now I'm working in the city. I'm working the water route right now. At least I can help people in the Roanoke.
Awesome.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, and all our beloved representatives, and all the people here. So my name is Babakir Harran. I am from Sudan. So before coming here a little bit, so I lived in a refugee camp for 11 years, but in 2015, luckily, I came here. So far, I have been here for seven years. So when you leave your own community and then come to even a better place, it is very hard to integrate with the community. And then even if you want to serve, so you have to know a way to serve, starting from a language barrier. So I have been through a lot, but I am still grateful and very thankful to this year especially have opportunity to especially be with My City Academy. So in seven years, so I was in an education setting. So I had opportunity to be in Virginia Western, so luckily, I was able to make it. So I am a this summer graduate, and also moving forward, going to UVA next year. So this is a lot. So in this community, there's a lot of opportunities, but we don't have the resources, or at least we don't know the resources that we can have. But being in this group and learning in four weeks with My City Academy, so I have learned so much. And from now on, so I have a heavy load that will help not just myself, but also our community here in Roanoke. Not we only know how to get help, but also we found ways to give help as well, which is pretty good. And I would like to take opportunity to say thank you very much, Katie, for running the program, and we hope and then ask our city government to support such a beautiful and helpful programs which will allow newcomers and immigrants and refugees to be able to easily integrate with the existing community and then work together and then make our community better. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Before you all leave, Katie, I want to ask council, if you have any comments, I want to recognize councilman Best Pitch.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank all of you. You make me proud to be a Roanoker. You know, we talk about diversity, we talk about welcoming week and all that stuff. This shows us the real Roanoke. So many cultures, so many languages, but yet, we all find a way to come together under the red, white, and blue. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're right down the line.
This is what makes Roanoke so beautiful and magical and amazing. Thank you all for making the decision to move to Roanoke. I've been here 21 years, and my journey is unique, just as your journey is unique. But there's something special about this place that not only invites us here, but welcomes us here. And My City Academy is such a great way, and you describe it so beautifully. Far too often, we don't know the resources we have until we do. And then not only is it our responsibility to utilize those resources, but to help others know about them as well. So thank you for spreading that message.
Vice Mayor, Jen.
Yeah, well, Mr. Cobb actually took it, but actually, I want to say congratulations. And I looked at Ahu, and you talked about the resources and the services, because we just talked about that today, right at noon. It is amazing that the resources that we have, and a lot of people aren't aware of them, but I like the fact that you want to take it a step further, as Mr. Cobb mentioned, and share with others, because I know that that is something we struggle with, is that all the resources and all the information that we provide in the city, a lot of folks are not aware of them. And so we're trying to figure out a way to make sure that we can get that information out there, number one. But when individuals like yourself have those resources and have experienced it and willing to go that step further, to share it with others, is important to us, because we want people to know who we are and about our services. So thanks again. And I just had to echo what you just said. That's exactly how I feel. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Which means?
Since you're going down the line, what can I say? First of all, I want to say congratulations. It's a beautiful program, by the way. And I especially want to thank the two speakers for what you had to say. It's very humbling, because we live in this city, I'm a native of this city, and you tend to take things for granted. You feel privileged until you hear someone coming from another country, another culture, and finding their way to make this their home. And they speak passionately about this city. So I want to just say thank you for that. It helps to humble me and my humble beginnings as well. Thank you.
There's not a whole lot to add. I'm like my buddy down there. I'm the crybaby up here. And you have touched my heart. As, you know, as I said, with the children, Roanoke is a very special place. And how wonderful it is that you guys could come forward tonight and demonstrate just how very special it is, that we truly are a welcoming city, and that we take the time to embrace one another. So I'm not going to add too much more to what has already been said. Congratulations. You are such beautiful, shiny examples of our beautiful star city. May God bless you and keep you all.
Oh, wow. I just want to say that I'm very proud of all of you. One, I'm very proud also because most of you didn't have a choice about where to come. You were sent to Roanoke, and you came to Roanoke. It wasn't by your choice, but that's where your refugee resettlement told you to come. But what you have decided to do is stay in our community and be a part of our community. I am so proud of that. Babakur, I'm so proud of you. I remember when you first came. I don't know if you remember me, but I used to work at the Refugee Office. And now that you're going to UVA, that's an amazing, amazing milestone. So thank you all for being here and for being part of the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May I remind you, before she gets to escape, I want to thank, I want to thank Katie. This was Katie's idea from the beginning, and so she conceived of this idea. She built the program. She ran the program for the four weeks in a row. Certainly, she had help from Angie in our office and a lot of departments that came together actually to provide the content and the materials and the presentation stuff. But I definitely want to acknowledge Katie and the work that she did to make this happen. So thank you.
Thank you all so much, and we're proud of you and welcome again to Roanoke. Thank you. Thank you, Katie.
Thank you so much. I'm glad to be part of City Academy Leadership Program. Special thank you, Katie. I'm from India.
So I almost hit a switch. Oh, I thought it was part of the... That's coming up. I want to take this opportunity to bring up a group of men that have made an impact in our city. They are the Omega Psi Phi, men of Omega Psi Phi. Come on up. All the men. I wanted them to come by as they celebrate their 90th anniversary. And we talk about men being mentors, being leaders in their community. And I wanted to recognize them for all that they do. And I really, I thought the lights going out was part of the show y'all doing, coming in, you never know. But I'm pleased at this time to recognize their president and leader, Mr. Jonathan Ralzer.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. Thank you for having the Brothers of Omega Psi Phi Incorporated here for City Council today. My name is Jonathan Ralzer, and I'm the newly elected bossless of the greatest fraternity in the world, Omega Psi Phi Incorporated. I want to thank the council for the help, for your help with the fraternity over the years, as we celebrate our 90th year of service. We've been a chapter since 1932. Gamma Alpha is dedicated to making a difference in the lives of youth and promoting positive growth and development in the communities we serve. We have helped in the community through our mandated programs with turkey giveaways, toy drives. We also gave COVID shots during the pandemic. We do school, we do school supply drives. We do talent hunts. And our most important thing is the scholarships to our high school seniors in the community. Again, thank you for supporting us throughout the years, City Council.
I want each of the men to come by, come around, and state your name, and so we can have a record of you being here. And so if you would, starting to my left, just come right around here and then state your name, and then hopefully we'll get a photo op afterwards.
Wow, you're having me to add it up, huh? Donnell Glover, and I have been with the fraternity 13 years, grad chapter, and I'm the chair of the Scholarship Committee.
Joseph Hancock, I've been with Omega for 42 years, and I am vice president of the Foundation 216 12th Street Northwest, Inc. Thank you.
Thank you, Joseph.
Good evening. My name is John Brown, and I've been a member of the fraternity since spring of 1975.
I got to follow that.
Good evening, everyone. Michael Hamlar, been a member of the fraternity for 18 years.
Hello, everyone. Joseph Sparrow, and I've been a member of fraternity for two years.
My name is Bob Davis, and I've been a member of fraternity for 49 years.
Name's Reginald Decat, been a member for 40 years.
How we doing, my beautiful people? We doing good. My name is Reggie Martin. I've been a member for two years, and I am the vice bossless of Gamma Alpha.
Good evening, members of council. My name is Sherman Lee Jr., and I've been a member of Omega Psi Phi for 18 years, and I'm the immediate past president.
And again, my name is Jonathan Ralzer. I'm the bossless of Gamma Alpha, and I've been a part of the fraternity since 2018. I'm the bossless of Gamma Alpha, and I've been a part of the fraternity since 2018.
The men of Omega Chi Phi. I know, everybody will be coming. All right. We're now down to the area of public hearings. And our first public hearing, I'll let everybody come in, and maybe people need to be in here. There's a request of Belmont Lofts LLC to rezone property located at 825 and 823 Stewart Avenue Southeast, and four parcels designated as Old Stewart Avenue Southeast, and two parcels designated as Old Dale Avenue Southeast, respectively, from institutional district and residential mixed density district to mixed-use plan unit development district. Christopher Vale is the agent and spokesperson. Mr. Vale, are you here tonight?
No, but, uh, I am. My name's Brent Cochran, and, uh, I'm one of the owners and developer.
All right. Come down, stand right there, and I'll get right back with you.
Okay.
There is an ordinance.
Move the ordinance. Second.
Oh, that's clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance to rezone property located at 825 and 823 Stewart Avenue Southeast, and four parcels designated as Zero Stewart Avenue Southeast, and two parcels designated as Zero Dale Avenue Southeast. Official tax map numbers, 411-2609, 411-2608, 411-2607, 411-2606, 411-2605, 411-2604, 411-2618, and 411-2617, respectively, from institutional district and residential mixed density district to mixed-use plan unit development district, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
Thank you. Uh, the City Planning Commission recommends approval, uh, of this action. And with that, I'll recognize Mr. Vale for any comments that you have to make, or you can just respond to some questions that the council may have.
Uh, no comments. I think the, uh, staff recommendation was thorough and covered everything. Happy to answer your questions, though.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing, and are there any citizens signed up to speak? Madam Clerk?
No, sir.
Okay, then no citizens, then we'll close the public hearing, and I'll ask my colleagues if they have any comments or questions on this issue. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I just want to commend you for your vision on this property. Uh, we have a number, and will likely continue to see a number of large church buildings, uh, come on the market, and, um, I'm really encouraged by what I see in this plan. Um, it's a challenge when you have a facility that has an enormous sanctuary, and how to sustain that space while also being creative, uh, in fully utilizing the rest of the space and adding, uh, affordable housing to the community. So, I really commend you, and thank you for your, your vision and foresight in developing this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Ms. Moon?
Councilmember McCobb stole all my words, but I do want to say, I was thankful to read in the report where it stated that you did receive positive feedback from the community.
Yes, ma'am.
Which I thought was a good thing, since you were coming into the southeast neighborhood. And as Joe had mentioned, uh, it shows that you're going to be renovating the existing building for 32 apartments, as well as commercial and assembly space, and I thought that was good. And especially looking throughout the city, where we have a lot of large vacant churches, and to see they're being repurposed, I think it's a great thing for developers to be looking at and having that vision. So, thank you for your foresight.
Thank you.
All right. Again, thank you. I believe I was at one of the neighborhood meetings when you all talked about this.
Yes, sir, you were there.
I go to so many, I get them mixed up.
It was last, it was, uh, May of this year.
Yeah, yeah. All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you all for making that vision a reality.
Well, we're not there yet, but, uh, this is an important step.
Okay. All right, uh, there are no more speakers. I'll close the public hearing, and, uh, are there any further comments by council? All right, Madam Clerk, would you please call a roll?
Ms. Sanchez-Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Best Pitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye. And the plan is received. Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
All right, item number two is a proposal of the city of Roanoke to sell approximately 1.1 acres of land and improvement, being the former Fishburne Park Caretaker's Cottage. There's an ordinance.
Move the ordinance. Second.
All right. Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager or his designee to execute the necessary documents providing for sale and conveyance of 2424 Bramleton Avenue Southwest, Roanoke, Virginia, bearing official tax map number 1470301, to Carrie and Justin Van Blerikum, upon certain terms and conditions, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
Thank you. I'm going to recognize the city manager for any comments he may have before we open the public hearing.
No comments at this time. Be happy to answer questions as we get into discussions. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll open the public hearing, and, uh, Madam Clerk, how many citizens do we have signed up to speak on this matter?
I have 11 at this point.
Okay, so they'll be given three minutes each?
Three minutes each.
Okay. I will ask, uh, a clerk to call the names out in order to speak.
Our first speaker, Danita St. Clair.
Hi, I'm speaking on behalf of Ronnie Sutton, who couldn't be here today. And she has written, Dear members of the Roanoke City Council, I am writing to you today as a member of the extended Roanoke community. Though I live in Bedford County, I own a construction company, Blue Brick Building and Renovations, which frequently works in Roanoke and holds a business license there. We have renovated many historic homes over the past 15 years, including one on Aurora Avenue, for which we won a renovation award from the city. Several years ago, I learned that the cottage in Fishburne Park was on the market. I inquired about purchasing it with a goal of creating an ice cream and sandwich shop. The development office referred me to the Grandin Court Neighborhood Association, so I contacted Frida Cass Cart, as she is a friend of mine who lives in the neighborhood. She explained that the neighborhood was opposed to the sale of the building, especially to a corporation, because there would be no oversight as to how the building would be renovated and used, plus it was contrary to their neighborhood plan. Additionally, the neighborhood, and in particular Frida, had already expended a great deal of time, effort, and money repairing rotted timbers and replacing the leaking roof. The neighborhood wishes to keep the building under the auspices of the Parks and Recreation Department, according to their neighborhood plan, as approved by the city council with a vote. Shortly prior to the pandemic, Frida and I developed a proposal to the city for the use of the building that fit within the neighborhood plan. The Roanoke Refugee Partnership, a nonprofit in Roanoke that I helped start, was willing to partner with the neighborhood to raise the funds to renovate the building to be used for classrooms for our clients and community center. Our proposal put all the responsibility for the renovation and subsequent maintenance of the building on the partnership between RRP and the Friends of the Caretaker's Cottage, removing it from the city. In exchange, we requested that the city give us a low-cost, long-term lease. We never received a response to this request. With the announcement that you intend to sell not only the building, but over an acre of valuable land for only $10 to a corporation, it appears that the city is ignoring the will of over 500 people who signed a petition not to sell the land or the house. Neighborhood members and the broader community who use the park are justifiably upset. I ask that you vote no on the Van Blerikum proposal, and encourage city management to stop trying to sell any of Fishburne Park's land and building. Please work with the Friends of the Caretaker's Cottage, the Grandin Court Neighborhood, and our longstanding nonprofit, which has benefited the Roanoke Valley's refugee population for several years. Sincerely, Ronnie Sutton.
Thank you.
Our, our next speaker, Frank McGuire.
Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Chair, members of council, I come before you tonight to express my support for the proposed purchase of the property by the Van Blerikums. Despite their name, they are just individuals that happen to have formed a corporation to do this. I'm supporting this proposal not just as a nearby resident, but also based on my professional experience in the last several decades, creating vibrant trails and green, green spaces for communities to enjoy. Public-private partnerships such as this help revitalize aging infrastructure in communities across the country, showcasing the beauty of our communal spaces while providing services that our overburdened city budget cannot. Derelict buildings can also become an invitation for illicit activities, no matter the neighborhood. An active business has a financial incentive to maintain the appearance, which helps to attract positive attention and generate enough traffic to dissuade bad behavior. A cafe such as the one provoked, proposed will become a destination for users of the Murray Run Greenway, encouraging people from the connected neighborhoods and schools to leave their cars parked the next time they want to enjoy a cup, cup of coffee or socialize with neighbors. Similar examples that I've run into in my work are, Allegheny County in Pennsylvania, the county parks department had a boathouse on, in North Park that had sat vacant for 30 years. They worked with a local business to create a cafe. It's now become the trail destination for that park. It also provides a safe space for people to leave their cars, because they know there's enough positive traffic happening there that they don't have to be concerned as they go out to use the adjoining park. The Valley Green in the middle of Wissahickin Park in Philadelphia has long been an oasis for hikers and cyclists alike. It was purchased by an outside group in 1937, after the city had decided they could no longer maintain it, we're going to tear it down. Closer to home, Roanoke County has, uh, partnered with Twin Creeks Brewing to keep the, uh, Brug Tavern open at Explorer Park. It's a lease agreement, but it is something that has been of real benefit to Explorer Park. I'm a relative newcomer to Roanoke, but my time as the Roanoke Valley Greenway Coordinator, I witnessed firsthand the maintenance needs of our city parks department. The department staff has done a remarkable job with the limited resources they have, and I'm confident that they have carefully considered the, the options that were out there, faced them as they looked at this property. In the end, I see the deal being made with the Van Blerikums as being in line with what I've seen in other communities. An opportunity for a local business to take a risk that will end up benefiting everyone. Thank you.
Mr. Gray, you live in the neighborhood?
I live in Wasina. So, I'm, I'm actually closer, I live right by Wasina Elementary School, so I'm probably closer to the, the cottage than I am to Wasina proper.
Okay, thank you.
Our next speaker, Andrew Zaba.
Yes, good evening. I'm a, I'm a, a citizen that lives, uh, within walking distance of Fishburne Park. My name's Andrew Zabo, and my wife and I are neighbors of the Van Blerikum, so we know that they, that the couple has, uh, deep roots in the community. They're not like an outside corporation coming in to, to develop something without any kind of interest in, in, in the surrounding community. Um, I live within walking distance of the park, and my wife and I often use the park and hike the trails there. And, um, you know, the Van Blerikums, they, that, I think the proposal that they are, um, that they put forward is, uh, is going to be a benefit to the community, because it'll take a lot of the burden off of, uh, refurbishing that house, um, the, the, um, the, the cottage, um, off of the city of Roanoke, because a lot of times, the city just doesn't have the resources to be able to, to keep up with the maintenance of these facilities. And I think that the type of business that they're proposing is also going, going to be, you know, relatively low impact, um, and it's, uh, you know, it's not going to, it, it's not going to overwhelm the park because of where the cottage is located, that it's, the hiking trails and everything will remain intact, from what I've seen. Um, but basically, I, I, I was just here to talk as a, as a concerned member of the community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, Paula Kraus.
My name is Paula Kraus. I'm over on Clearfield near, I'm, I'm new to the community, basically. And I'm returning to Roanoke after being away for 30 years. One of the things that was an attraction to come back here is parks and, and the green space. And when I read an article about a 1.1 acre property being sold for $10, it just, it, it's just astounds me. It, I would agree with Mr. McGuire. When you're talking about a lease, that's something entirely different. I think that, you know, there should be a negotiation for a 20-year lease for $20, and the $150,000 to fix the place up. Or I'd suggest that we do a GoFundMe effort and see, you know, with social media, and, you know, there's a commitment, it seems like I'm hearing 500 community members, that, that something could be done by the community for a senior center, whatever, but to sell it, and, and from what I can see, I'm, again, I'm new. You know, it just is incredible that this can be sold in four years. You know, when you say somebody's got long roots in the community, and, and yet they've proposed, made it mention that you can sell it in four years, and we're talking about a property in that community, I, I, I'm just throwing a number out there, like, what is it? It would go for $500,000 for an investment of $10 in some repairs. It's just, this is, you all are stewards of the community, you're stewards of the parks. This just seems like a giveaway to me. And I thought it was important to make that opinion, and, and, you know, I've seen some communications on social media, and I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Thank you for your time.
The next speaker, Carrie Turnbaugh. Turnbaugh? Turnbull.
My name is Dr. Carrie Turnbull, and I have lived in the Grandin Court Neighborhood for a majority of my life. I grew up on Oak Crest where my parents still live, and I lived with my family on Oregon Avenue at this time. I've also known Carrie for a very long time. We grew up going to church together, singing in children's choir, and attending youth group events together. And when we both moved back to the area, our older girls played with each other on occasion. I love Roanoke, and I love the Grandin Court Neighborhood, that's why I moved back to it. I have watched over the past 20 years as the Caretaker's Cabin has become more and more dilapidated. When Carrie and Justin first told my husband and I of their desire to purchase the property, restore it, and turn it into a coffee shop, we were ecstatic, and that feeling has definitely not changed. The Grandin Court Neighborhood has not had anything like this for a very long time, if ever. There is no other business in our neighborhood that is a family-friendly meeting spot. We were also excited that this project would help restore this beautiful home and give it the respect that it deserves. And I also know that Carrie and Justin are good and honorable people and that they love this neighborhood and Roanoke as much as I do, because they grew up here too and still have family here as well. I know that the leaders of Grandin Court Neighborhood Association have made it seem that a majority of the neighborhood is against the sale, but that is not an accurate portrayal. The 500-person vote that they speak of was taken at least five years ago, and as the time has changed dramatically since then, and the neighborhood has changed since then, no recent vote has been taken. Our neighborhood has had two meetings that centered around this specific topic. The first was in the spring, and the second was this past Thursday. At neither meeting was a vote held to see if our neighborhood supports this change. However, I do know that a petition my husband and I placed on the internet on Friday got 140 signatures in favor of it in just three days from people within the neighborhood and more than 500 from people in the surrounding neighborhoods. I'd like to take a moment and invite any neighbors in the room who support this proposal to stand. There are a lot here. Several neighbors have mentioned over the past decade and a half that they would like to do something with the property, but no plans have come to fruition. The city lacks the funding to properly restore this building. Investment from our neighbors is the answer. By selling this property to the Van Blaercoms, we all win. The building is preserved and put to good use. The neighbors get a wonderful new amenity in the form of a coffee shop and community gathering space. The city gets a business that will drive revenue in the form of taxes. I hope that the city council sees what an asset Carrie and Justin are offering to the neighborhood and to the city. Thank you.
The next speaker, Barbara Dirk.
I am Barbara Dirk, mayor and members of council and administration. I ask the city council to be proactive. The future is not something to be wished for, the future is something to be achieved. The future is not a matter of chance, the future is a matter of choice. I was part of the president's council that first addressed this issue years ago, and I believe in strong neighborhoods. The neighborhood was asking to renovate the Gish House, not the Gish House, and not the Caretaker's Cottage, but the Bedwell Home, and they were not given any support on that. The neighborhood gave their, did, did make improvements to stabilize the home, but yet the city was not willing to work with the neighborhood. That, I'll say, "I am so old," and then you say, "How old are you?" I am so old.
How old are you?
I am so old, I remember Shadland Park. I remember that when it flooded in 1985 and Valley View water flowed over, that Ms. Brown and Ms. Robinson went up into their attics and still the water came up higher, and they both drowned, so now it's Brown-Robinson Park. I am so old.
How old are you?
I remember when Laura Katz was given the cabin and the land to renovate as a private home, and she asked some architects, and they said it was going to cost over $300,000 to stabilize the foundation, and she finally said, "I can't afford it, I'm going to turn it back over to the city." And so she gave that land back to the city. I am so old.
How old are you?
I have a friend who lived on Bramleton Avenue, right across the street, and Murray Run would flood, and she got tired of having her house flood all the time, and so she finally moved to the county. So I am so old that I can remember these things, and I can remember, yes, I'd like to have a coffee shop. We wanted to put a bicycle shop there, but were, was not able to because of restrictions. I think that parkland is very valuable to the parks. I ask you to support the strategic plans of the Roanoke City 2040 Plan that talk about nature, that talk about parklands, and somehow work a lease. Don't sell that 1.6 acres, but work a lease out and turn the Caretaker Cottage back into the Blackwell House with historic designation, and let it be a drawing point for the community. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Frida Catcart.
The city has had a policy for decades to involve public participation to develop and implement plans and policy. Citizen boards, commissions, and neighborhood civic leagues spend countless volunteer hours to solve problems and to serve our communities. I have served six-year terms, two six-year terms, as the president of the Grandin Court Neighborhood Association, each time I got termed out of office serving my neighborhood. I also graduated from the Roanoke City Leadership College that helps citizens learn how government works and where to go when we have problems, to work with the city to solve them. Our neighborhood plan clearly showed, still shows, the recent one that the city council approved, that Fishburne Park is supposed to remain green space recreational. Now, right across the street in that plan is acres of mixed-use commercial, the Carillion Enns, that used to be the Chandoa Life property. The parking lot that they have there sits usually mostly empty. That is a place that would be appropriate for development, that wouldn't impact with the stormwater and would fit with our neighborhood. You already heard about a plan with the Roanoke Refugee Partnership for a long-term lease that would benefit and fit with our neighborhood. The petition that was referred to earlier, that was done several years ago in response to Laura Katz, was just posted in a board on Fishburne Park. Actually, we collected over 600 signatures of people who actually used the park. And it simply stated, "We petition Roanoke City Council to remove the notice of sale to develop Fishburne Park. It's important to protect our green space and historical buildings for future generations." There is already problems, it's a very popular park, and we already have overflow parking problems where there is a steep, narrow road that borders the park and a highway on the other side. That is something that needs to be addressed with the current proposed contract, the traffic and congestion that would hurt our neighborhood. I ask for you to reject the current proposal, this contract, and to table it. I also want to mention that multiple letters from the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board had been sent to city council and city management, asking them to work with our neighborhood to implement the plan so we can renovate it. You have an award-winning contractor who's willing to do the work, and I appreciate this time to address the council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, Owen McGuire.
Mr. Mayor and all council members, thank you. My name's Owen McGuire, and I've lived next to Fishburne Park for about 39 years now, and right next to the property, as a matter of fact, that's under consideration. I'm here tonight to speak for myself, and about the proposed contract between the city and the Van Blaercom developers regarding the cottage at Fishburne Park. The cottage, for a little background, the cottage and the land associated with the proposed sales are part of a 15-acre parcel the city purchased from a development company about 100 years ago. That parcel directly abuts to a 25-acre parcel that the Fishburnes donated to the city. In total, it's about 45 or more acres there. The 25 acres is protected by covenant. However, there's not a covenant protecting the 15 acres, and that's why we're all here having this conversation. Nevertheless, all that parkland, all of it, has been zoned open space, green space, recreation for as long as anybody knows. People who move to the area are moving close there because they want to move close to an open park, and they believe the city would maintain the park and not develop it. Now the city is willing to deal with a developer to give them a house and an acre of prime parkland for $10. The developers want this land gift from the city to be zoned commercial, to be used for retail use only with a few restrictions, but not restricting the building from becoming a restaurant, a bar, or even a gambling institution, possibly even a national food chain, a McDonald's, what have you. Within two miles of the property, there are eight coffee shops. None of them have more than a quarter acre of the land that they need to operate out of, but for some reason, these folks need, they think they need a whole acre. Why? Because if the coffee shop doesn't work out for any reason, they can sell it, and then they can just walk away from it and sell it as a restaurant or bar for a nice tidy profit. I might add that the Grandin Court Neighborhood Association secured a grant in 2011 to fix the house and to fix the rafters. Ultimately, council, you have a choice to make, to make a developer's land dream come true, or to protect a valuable Parks and Recreation 100-year-old property for citizens' use now and in the future. And it was in, as it was intended, or table the contract until a more reasonable amount of land could be negotiated. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
The next speaker, Danielle Poe.
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, members of council. My name's Dani Poe, I'm a Roanoke native, I live in Wasena with my family. I'm here this evening to express my support for the Van Blaercoms and the proposed sale of the Fishburne Caretaker's Cottage. Properties are not designed to sit vacant. The longer the property sits, the more the deferred maintenance will be for the next property owner. The cost is going to be higher, and the owner is going to have to deal with more construction. You have a local family in front of you with the desire to invest the time and the money to bring the property back to life with a proposed active use. I ask you to seriously consider this proposal and think of the future of the park, the neighborhood, and the people who will ultimately be able to cross the threshold of the property. Thank you for your consideration.
William Sweet.
Thank you for letting me come and talk to y'all. Selling public land, selling public parkland is regressive public policy, and I think your council has a reputation for having progressive public policy to grow Roanoke economically, et cetera. This private land will become private land, and at that point, 10 years, 20 years, 50 years, 100 years, what's going to happen to that land? It's going to be developed commercially, and lo and behold, probably in 10, 15, 20 years, we'll be in here fighting the city council over some kind of a use that's incompatible with our neighborhood. I feel that that would, any kind of commercial development, bulldozing it out so they can have easy access from the main street, cutting all those trees, having a nice retaining wall 15, 20 feet behind, so that right on the front, I can see the potential for any kind of commercial, and it's really not defined in this proposal what limits would be on the commercial use to satisfy me. There are many, many concessions on public lands. The Blue Ridge Parkway has concessions all over Peaks of Otter. The state parks have concessions. I have no problem at all with a coffee spot at this house. It can be run under a concession. It can be done by a public-private partnership. The federal government has all kinds of money right now, and a big chunk of that is being advocated for historic restoration. Last thing I'd like to say is that park has been around for years and years, centuries, not centuries, it sounds like a century, but certainly decades and decades, and it'll be there for decades and decades more. Selling any kind of parkland is regressive policy, purely regressive policy. This day and time, inflation, economy, there's a lot of middle-class families having a hard time. Parks play a very important role, getting them out of the house during COVID, getting them out of the house during times of economic problems, going to the city parks. You always have a happy child when they leave a city park. So that's my spill to you. I hope you'll really, really consider the regressive, regressive public policy of selling any kind of land in a park. Thank you.
Tatiana McGuire.
Mr. Mayor, Roanoke City Council, my name is Tatiana McGuire, and I have lived at 2514 Bramleton for 39 years. I feel very fortunate to have personally known George Blackwell when he lived in the cottage with his wife and son. On more than one occasion, he told me he was researching the land around his house at the Roanoke County Courthouse, and that he discovered it was a burial ground for Civil War slaves, and that the land should not be disturbed. Blair Fishburne and the Fishburne family left this area of the park to be a bird and wildlife sanctuary for all to enjoy. Do we really need another coffee shop? We have many in the area. And what's to say another business will want their place in the park, and another business, and another business, until we really don't have a park at all? Why can't a piece of land just be a piece of land to walk on, to stroll your children, to jog, to ride a bike, to throw a frisbee? I'm sure all the people that enjoy these activities on this particular part of the park will miss it. park will miss it. Mr. Mayor, Roanoke City Council, please don't dig up, please don't dig up this peaceful and therapeutic piece of land. Thank you.
And our last speaker is Ryan Blackwell.
My name is Ryan Blackwell. My great-grandfather, John Henry Blackwell, was the caretaker of the park. My grandfather, George Blackwell, lived there, grew up there, continued to live there as an adult while he was a city employee of Roanoke. The only time he did not live there is when he was gone serving in the U.S. Army during World War II. My father, Charles Blackwell, grew up in that house, was raised there with his sister and his brother. The only time my father lived less than a mile away from that park is when he was gone serving in the Marine Corps. I spent the first seventeen years of my life there, every Christmas, every Thanksgiving, and every Sunday night eating dinner with my granny. The only time I've ever lived less than a mile away from that park is when I was gone serving with the Marine Corps. My family is very deep-rooted in Roanoke and in the park. We are in support of the Van Blarecomes purchasing the house so that they can renovate it, so it can be what it used to be. My grandfather took great pride in that house being well-maintained. He would be very upset with the state that the house is in. He would be ecstatic knowing that someone wanted to bring it back and have it in the shape that he had it in. I had great childhood memories being there, being with my parents, my aunts and uncles, friends, family, members in here, people in here, they're kids who I grew up with being there. I've known Justin and Carrie the majority of my life, I mean, back to when we were single-digit age. They're good people. If they say that they're going to do A, B, and C, then that's what they're going to do. It's not going to be a bar. It's not going to be a McDonald's. It's going to be a neighborhood coffee shop that people can come and get a cup of coffee while they're bringing their kids to the park. You know, get kids out from in front of video games and in front of TV screens, have them making memories with their parents in a park. It's an opportunity for everyone. It's a win-win. My family, we've talked about this, we are in support of this, myself, my stepmom, my sister, we all shared the petition. We are all for this. Y'all need to go with the Van Blarecomes proposal, well, I urge you to go with the Van Blarecomes proposal. I think it's a fair and honorable one. They're good people. What they say they're going to do is what they're going to do. Speaking from, for the family, I think this is a great idea. I think y'all should move forward with it, and I'm looking forward to it because I like coffee, and also, I can take my kids into my granny's old house that I spent my formative years in. I've taken my kids over there before and shown them the house. I didn't feel comfortable letting them walk on the steps because of how dilapidated they are now, but this is a chance for it to be revitalized, and I think it'd be a wonderful idea. Thank you for your time.
That was our last speaker, Mayor.
Is that a speaker?
Is there any chance that I can speak for myself as well?
Well, that time has passed. I thought you were speaking.
Well, I was speaking for Roanoke.
Well, I'll make an exception for you.
Thank you. I really appreciate the council offering an opportunity for all the citizens, well, for some of the citizens to come up. I live in that area. I walked that park probably four out of the seven days a week. I love that park. I'm hearing a lot of different things. As a citizen, I am really asking that you guys not only look at the current plan for the park, which, what I'm hearing is that the building, people want the building to be brought back up. There are proposals for that that are in keeping with the historical area, the nature of that park. So that could actually be done. The lady that I was referencing earlier, they have a proposal to do that. So that could be done. The thing that I'm really concerned about, not only in not looking at that and taking care of the building and maintaining the building, creating a solution that actually everyone can live with, is the fiscal responsibility. To sell that property for ten dollars to any organization or individual, and then an acre of valuable, that land is right on Brambleton Avenue. That is a prime piece of real estate, which can then be sold in four years' time at a huge profit to the entity that buys it. The amount of money that they could make in four years' time is equivalent to about five hundred thousand dollars. The city would never see that. It would take the city seventy to eighty years for that amount of money to be recouped in taxes. So that, as a citizen, that's a huge loss to me individually for that, if that is the way it goes. So I hear two things. I hear, oh, well, is there a way to keep the property and the park in keeping with the current plan, which was already approved by the council? I think there is. If you're going to sell it, and you're not going to listen to that, and you're going to sell it, then why sell it at such a cheap rate? That doesn't make sense. So those are the things that I would like to, I prefer, as an individual, I want to keep it all as a viable park, that, use the organizations that are available, invite those organizations to create a collaborative plan that will do what the gentleman that we just heard from, from the family, keep the, get that building back into shape, that the city doesn't have to do it. There's other organizations that are willing to take that on. Thank you very much for your time. I really appreciate that.
Thank you. All right, I'll make one exception, all right, and we're going to move on. Now, I'm going to close the public hearing. Pardon me? What was that? Okay, all right. Let me close the public hearing. Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing, and we're now down to comments by council. And so I'm going to recognize the colleagues that want to discuss or have any concerns. Mr. Mayor, as we do with rezoning requests and so forth, I would like to hear from the proposed purchasers of the property, to hear what they have to say about the situation and about what they've heard this evening. Are they on a purchase? Okay, is that your request? We can do that. Yes, Mayor.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Lee and council members. I'm Carrie Van Blarecombe. This is my husband, Justin Van Blarecombe. And as many of our friends have expressed, our roots are here. We are native Roanoker's as well, particular to the Grandin Court Neighborhood. My parents are here and still live in a house on Woodlawn Avenue, which has been in my family for over a hundred years. So Fishburne Park holds a lot of dear memories for us from sledding and trail running, and still to this day, we have three kids, and we've brought them back to Roanoke to raise them here and provide opportunity for the city. With that, we also have three passions that highlight and tie us to this Fishburne Park Cottage, and one of those is hospitality, a second one is small business, and a third is fixing up property. So hospitality is one of our favorite ways to level people. We opened our home and have had interns and college students live with us in the past. Over the years, we've been able to renovate our residences specifically, and a couple of commercial buildings in Raleigh and in Richmond, and then also here in the Roanoke Valley as well. And that gives us a lot of knowledge and experience in rehabbing this cottage as well. And we love seeing that new life and honoring the old that has been there. And lastly, we love supporting small local businesses. We've recently started our own small business in the valley, and its mission is to share Roanoke and the beauty of Roanoke by bringing people to the valley. So we want you to know and to reiterate who we are, what our passions are, and for the coffee shop being an opportunity at the Blackwell House or the Fishburne Park Cottage to be a place where we can bring people together. And we do believe, and hear some of these concerns tonight, like with political divisions in the post-pandemic world, that we feel that tension, and people need people, and we don't want to stay isolated or divided. We do want to use the park to stay a park. We really believe that a coffee shop that we've been affectionately calling Fishburne Perk with our children is a great way to do that. We have met with the Neighborhood Association and heard their concerns earlier this year, and that's why we voluntarily worked with the city thus far to limit the use via deed restrictions, so there will never be a coffee convenience store or a McDonald's or a commercial space of that size. It will be limited under mixed pud to five or six very close-knit, similar coffee shop style possibilities per ownership and then possible rental in the future. So all that to say, we have kids that are at PH, we have kids that are at James Madison, we both grew up in all of those elementary schools around there, so we do have dreams of allowing opportunities for them to work and play in that park, at the coffee shop, and bringing kids from PH who live in multiple other neighborhoods to work there, to provide a skill, to grow them, that they can then take to their future, you know, parks and cities and neighborhoods. So we do understand that change is hard, it's scary, but we are really in the business, as a famous quote says, of building longer tables and not taller fences. And we do believe that this piece of that property is concentrated enough to be an amenity and to increase the value of the park itself. Thank you.
Okay. All right, Mr. Best Pitch? Well, Mr. Mayor, I want to address some of the concerns, the very valid concerns, I would say, that have been raised about this situation, and I guess start off by sort of peaking on part of what Ms. Van Blarecombe, if I'm saying that right, I hope I am, talked about in terms of the zoning for the property. Mixed-use planned unit development is more than just saying, well, it's only, you know, five or so different uses, similar type uses. I mean, that's true. In addition to that, any change to the property, any addition or any change to the property whatsoever, would have to come back through the planning commission to the city council in the future. So, you know, that's the reason why we established planned unit developments in the first place a number of years ago. So it's not just that you got this zoning and you can do anything that this zoning allows. It's like, no, you submit a plan, and that's it. That's all you can do, and that's all any future owner can do, because the zoning will stay the same regardless of who owns the property unless someone petitions for a rezoning at some point. That's in the contract. That's part of the contract. Section three of the contract is conditions prior to closing, and one of them is that before closing, you get that zoning designation. Another requirement in the contract is that the purchasers pursue historic tax credits. Now, you can't pursue historic tax credits and then take away the historic aspects of the building. They're not going to give tax credits for that. They're going to give tax credits for preserving the historic aspects of the building that should be continued. Ten dollars? We sell property like this for ten dollars because we want people to accept the restrictions to do it the way we want to see it done. Any buyer that would pay hundreds of thousands of dollars for an acre of land with a rundown building on it is not going to accept our restrictions. They're going to say, if I'm paying this amount of money, I'm going to do what I want to do with the property. So that's why the restrictions are there, and that's why the ten dollars is there. In terms of the revenue from the property, it's already been pointed out, this is, we're coming up on a hundred years that this has been parkland, and for the city, that's meant no revenue. We don't get any revenue from parkland. We get an expense of maintaining it, keeping the grass cut and so forth, but it doesn't produce any revenue. If the property goes into private ownership, then that means that revenue will be collected based on the assessed value. Improvements of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars or whatever amount, going to make that assessment go up, which means the real estate revenue goes up. So I think that the idea that we're somehow losing revenue by selling this property just doesn't really hold up. Yeah, I would say that I really wish, as you know, Mr. Mayor, I lived in the old southwest neighborhood for twenty-seven years, and the old southwest neighborhood leases a building at the back of the park, Highland Park, for a very nominal amount, and agrees to maintain that building. City doesn't pay anything for the improvements that have been done to that building, and they've done quite a bit of improvement to the building over the years, and they continue to maintain it. I really wish that the neighborhood had come forward with a proposal like that before it was listed under a notice of sale. And in fact, I suggested that, but the suggestion was never, well, it was just ignored, basically. Once it's listed under a notice for sale, there's a process that's outlined for how you can respond to the notice for sale. It's very important to be consistent with the process, because if we receive multiple offers, they all need to be done the same way so that we can compare one to another. So if somebody chooses not to follow the process that's identified in the notice for sale and come up with some other way of presenting a plan, that's not fair. That's not fair to anybody. And to my knowledge, the other ideas that have been presented tonight, the other possibilities have never come in that form to the city. I visit a lot of other parks when I travel around. I love to go to parks, and I've seen many parks that have a coffee shop. It's a very compatible use with parkland, you know, however it's owned, however it's leased, however, whatever. It's a great thing to have in a park, because I'm sure you're not just going to have only coffee. You know, somebody wants a soft drink, or they want some water, or they want some snack on, or whatever, as they're there using the park, using the greenway, and so forth, that's available to them. So I think this is a great, as someone else said, I think it was Mr. Blackburn, this is a win-win. This is good for the city, it's good for the neighborhood, and it's good for a young couple that wants to continue to contribute to the economic progress of our city. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right, any other comments, colleagues? Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of questions for the Van Blarecomes. Would you all mind coming back up just for some clarification? And while you're here, I do want to acknowledge and thank the Neighborhood Association for their efforts in repairing and replacing and restoring their efforts in repairing and replacing and restoring the roof and the timbers. I think that's helped expand the life and extend the life of the cottage, so I don't want that to go unnoticed. And I want to thank our Parks and Rec Advisory Board for their recommendations. And one of the questions that came up from them was regarding the amount of land. And I'm not sure how you all arrived at, you know, whether it's 1.1 acres or .6, which is like half. The diagrams that I've seen, uh, one drawing I've seen that I think you, Mr. Van Blaricon, shared in a letter showed a small parking area to the, if you're looking at the house this way, to this side, a little patio area out in front, which is not a huge parking area, but it's, uh, it appears to be enough parking for the business that you're having there. Can you talk a little bit about the importance or the distinction for you between 1.1 acres and like half of that, .6?
Yeah, absolutely. So, for us, the, uh, because we do have to, we're not independently wealthy and we have to create, we have to have a business, that comes with financing. And this building, as you heard from the speakers, even on the opposition side, that the last construction, construction company said it was going to cost over $300,000 for, um, just the foundation alone, I think is what they had said. So with that, we need enough value to actually get a loan on the property. And the building by itself, surrounded by just the land around it, doesn't give that value that, we don't want to get in the situation, and that's why I put in the, in the, um, in the contract at least 150,000. It's going to cost way more than that, but we wanted to offer a kind of a level of protection to the citizens of the city that it wasn't going to be bought and just sit empty. And so, in order to substantiate the possible cost of that going significantly higher and getting a loan for that, and we've been very transparent, we told the Neighborhood Association this, is that there needs to be enough value in order to get a loan to actually do the property.
Thank you. And you, you kind of segued to my second question.
Yeah.
And we've heard different variations of how much it might cost because of the current condition of the building to restore it. Do you have an estimate? I mean, this is a significant investment.
It absolutely is.
And can you talk about the, at least the initial investment, to just secure the foundation and then to restore the building to make it usable for a coffee shop?
Yeah, we've, I mean, we've had a number of people that we've talked to, um, and building engineers and that sort of thing, that have all either been in the property before or are ready to go in the property. And so, this, as part of this process, because we're not professional developers, we're just citizens that want to do something, um, we have got, uh, the first step is, is let's get this under contract, let's get these people in there so that they can really explore what the costs are going to be. But we want to have enough room that if that goes substantially higher than 150,000, that we're still in it because of the value's still there.
Thank you. We've, we've heard some comments about what happens after four years. I don't know if that's the magic number, but, um, and this might be a city attorney question or a city manager question. But in the process of things happening and the investment that you make, obviously, I don't think that you'll, I mean, and I'm trying to be optimistic. I mean, obviously, you'd love to see a return in four years.
Yeah.
I don't know that that's very realistic.
No, absolutely.
Uh, it's going to take a while.
Yeah.
But, uh, one of the questions I've heard from some folks is if the property were sold, and again, I think because of the restrictions, it's very limited in terms of what it might be reused for. But some citizens have asked, does there a clause or something that if the city wanted to have the right of first refusal in the contract? Is that something that can be done? Is that?
It's something that could be done if there was a right of first refusal. We'd take in contract to dent them at this point. However, I think that the way the city approached things was mainly in the, within the contract and then the land use issues, as you heard Mr. Bestpitch discuss, that that really limited the uses so that it would protect the neighborhood and protect the city in that regard, to ensure that the property was being used in a way that benefited the owners, yes, but more importantly, the users of the park, that it, we didn't go all of a sudden see, you know, some big-box fast food restaurant move in.
Right. Thank you. Well, thank you for your clarifications on those, and thank you for your willingness to, to bring this forward and invest in your community.
Thank you.
Our community. Thank you.
All right, anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, I move that this matter be continued to our December 5th meeting, preferably the 2:00 PM meeting, in order to allow more discussion by council.
I second.
All right, uh, Madam Clerk, can you call a roll on that to basically table this until December 5th?
Continue to, uh, specific time?
December 5th and 2:00 PM session.
Not just tape?
Yes.
Continue to December 5th at 2:00 PM.
Yes, thank you.
Call, Madam, if you will call a roll on that, on that motion.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboyd?
Aye.
Mr. Bestpitch?
No.
Mr. Cobb?
No.
Ms. Moon?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye. All right, that, this, yeah, so we'll continue this to December 5th at 2:00 PM. Thank you.
And at that time, just to be clear, it'll be considered by council for a vote?
Right.
The public hearing having been held, open and closed, just, just a vote?
Exactly. Hearing has been opened and closed, and, uh, well, we got to finish this, okay, well, we've already finished this.
Yeah.
Yes, sir, Mr. Bestpitch.
Well, I just wondered if we could take a little, a short recess?
Yeah, we will. We will. I'm going to get to that.
Before we get into the next item on the agenda.
I'm going to get to that. That's another proposal. So I think we better go ahead and take a break here. All right. Okay, this one, this has been continued until December the 5th at 2:00 PM. All right, we're going to be in recess for about five minutes. Item three is a proposal of the City of Roanoke to sell property located at Old Dalton Road Northeast, official tax map number 7130123 to TPB Enterprises LLC. There's an ordinance taken.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager or his designee to execute the necessary documents providing for the sale and conveyance of Zero Dalton Road Northeast, Roanoke, Virginia, bearing official tax map number 7130123 to TPB Enterprises LLC upon certain terms and conditions, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
Thank you. And I'm going to recognize the city manager for any comments he'd like to make.
Uh, no, no comments that aren't covered in the staff report, but happy
No, no comments that aren't covered in the staff report, but happy to answer any questions should you have any. Thank you.
All right. We're going to open the public hearing, and are there any citizens signed up to be heard?
Yes, we have one citizen, Chris Kraft.
Good evening, Mayor Lee. This proposal was put before the Wildwood Civic League, which we agree with. We think that this would be a good thing. This stormwater retention pond has been a problem for many, many years, even before the district view. Many of y'all that were on city council when that was built heard citizens complain about stormwater. Well, the city hasn't been able to keep a clean line, good liner in it, they can't maintain it because they just can't pay for it. This nice gentleman is willing to take it apart, take it, redo it, up to code, and make it better, and he's planning a big, big investment in my neighborhood, adding some more affordable housing businesses along 460, which will be coming before the planning commission in January. I wish I could be there, but I have to work because the city won't be like Roanoke County and move the planning commission meetings to the evenings when citizens can actually show up. Daniel from Thompson Brothers back here, if you'll stand, Daniel. If you have any questions, he's the person that's in charge of buying it. He's also the purchaser and owner of the old Southern Classic car wash on 460. He'll be redoing that into a nice new business that's not an eyesore. So we ask you as neighbors of the city and Wildwood Civic League, please accept his proposal to purchase this because we need the pond to be cleaned, redone, where it won't flood our neighborhood streets. And the city will still be able to use it as far as the state's industrial park, which what runs off into it.
Are you saying this is going before the planning commission?
There's something going in front of the planning commission on new affordable housing in January.
Okay.
Many people in the neighborhood can't attend because the meetings are two o'clock and people work at two o'clock in the afternoon.
Okay. All right. Okay.
That's the petitioner, Daniel Litter.
So you want to come in if you want to ask any questions or something, the council may have some questions for you.
And, and good evening. Thank you all for your time. I'll be brief here. I think the staff report speaks for itself, but essentially this is part of an overall larger project that is going to come before planning commission and council as a zoning action. It's planned to come forward in January. As Chris pointed out, we've worked with the Wildwood Civic League, we've been working with the adjoining neighbors on this project for many months now, and this is an existing property that's owned by the city. It's a stormwater management facility, that's its sole purpose currently, so we've been working with city staff to purchase it at a market value, and part of the agreement is, is that we will take over the maintenance, which is a current expense to the city. There are some issues with the current facility, and essentially the project that we're going to bring before you all is joined on both sides by this property. So we'd like to own it in order to be able to maintain it in a manner that's first class, and to be able to landscape around it, and essentially just beautify the area that's part of an overall larger project. And I think it's a benefit to the city from the perspective of the fact that, again, the quantity and quality that's there, we're going to maintain, and we're actually going to improve some of the existing issues, and again, a stormwater management agreement that's going to be reached between our company and the City of Roanoke to address the costs associated with that. And so if you all have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them and appreciate your time.
Okay, well, thank you. Stand there for a few moments.
Sure.
And then go see what happens. All right, then, no further citizens to be heard, and I'm going to close the public hearing. And now I will ask my colleagues if they have any questions or comments on this proposal. I'm hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call it over.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Best Pitch.
Aye.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Price.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the ordinance passes.
Thank you all.
Thank you, sir. All right, item number four is a proposal of the City of Roanoke to lease the Norwich Recreation Center to Box Fit. There is an ordinance.
What is the ordinance?
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager or his designee to execute a lease agreement with Box Fit, a Virginia corporation, for the lease of a portion of city-owned property located at twenty-one twenty Roanoke Avenue Southwest, Roanoke, Virginia, designated as official tax map number one three two two one one zero, known as the Norwich Recreation Center, being approximately six thousand seventy-three square feet for a term of up to three years commencing December first, twenty twenty-two, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
All right, thank you. I'm going to recognize the city manager for any comments you may have.
Yeah, I think the only thing I'd say at this point is, so this, we entered into discussion, staff did, entered into discussions with the organization at the request of council a couple of months ago, and because the space had been freed up, we used the space previously, which hasn't been used for recreation uses for some time, for storage, and we've relocated the items that were in storage, entered into the discussions with the boxing club, and have reached agreement to lease the property, which what amounts to essentially the lease payment is equivalent to the utilities, so essentially that's, that's what is, how the rent was established. So certainly we can answer questions if need be as we go along, but thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to open the public hearing now, and Madam Clerk, are there any citizens signed up to speak?
We have one citizen, Latory Woodbury.
All right, Ms. Woodbury.
Mayor Lee.
Hi, Ms. Woodbury.
How y'all doing today? I'm back again. I got three minutes, let's make this fast. I know y'all want to go home, I do. Listen, I don't know what the problem, what the holdup is, what the issue is. I've been here about three times. I've came up here, I've asked for a facility and funding to be able to run my program. I pack probably a hundred kids every year. Right now I have forty. So, I mean, you guys awarded me five thousand dollars. We went through that, we still want to have a facility. You guys want to rent me a facility of Norwich for forty-eight hundred dollars a month, I mean, a year, and I asked for a subsidized lease. We can't afford that. I offer my, my program after school, end of weekends, for free, because I deal with low to no income families. So when I come to y'all and I ask y'all for help, I'm not coming just to make myself look good, definitely not coming to waste my time. So I ask you guys, if we're dealing with city property that we're selling and leasing for ten and fifteen dollars, you guys gave me a grant for five thousand, why do I have to give you forty-eight hundred dollars a year for a building that was used as storage? I mean, come on, give me something, give me some help, you know what I'm saying? I'm pushing hard every day, me and my wife, all the people I have, we're all volunteers. We have a lot of kids to come through our program. Matter of fact, I'm going to pass this out to you guys. This is from your reset team. Y'all wanted to grant billions of dollars. This is right here, what we've been doing, I'll have this down. I don't want millions. I want to be able to stabilize my program. I want to be able to feed my family, I want to be able to get paid for what I do. I want to be able to run my program in a safe facility, without drugs, alcohol, gangs, none of that, and I just want to be able to do what I do. And I, I mean, I've came here, and I've been doing this, going up here for a while, and I'm very appreciative of everybody who's been listening to me, giving me audience. I know you guys have a lot of issues, but, you know, I count too. I'm here too. And if you're going to deny me, deny me. I'll take that right up, right up front, but I don't want to be strung along, I don't want to be used as a pawn, I don't want to be used in none of that. I want my, my program to be funded, and given a facility, and given a fair chance, like any other program, that will be bought for, and that's all I'm asking.
Well, I don't think anybody's going to use, want to use you as a pawn. I think we want to, I know the council wants to see the program succeed. Now, I'm not, I'm a little bit behind on, on the five thousand dollars that you have.
We had, we had five thousand dollars that we used. Twenty-six hundred dollars went to me for my program expenses, nine hundred something went to equipment, all of my students have equipment, gloves, everything. When it comes to my program, they don't have to pay anything. I provide everything for them, and any other boxing program does not do that. I do. So I'm just asking, hey guys, if, if, if the funds are not there, then they're not there, but if they are there, I'm requesting them, and I gave a budget for my program on a yearly basis, I gave a budget for my program on a monthly basis, you know, I don't know how else to act, so I mean, I don't speak with one language, so.
All right, anybody in council have any comments on where? He is. All right. Do you want, Mr. Cobb to have a statement?
I just had a couple of questions. So the five thousand dollars, if I'm remembering correctly, was one of the many grants for gun violence prevention, which you all went through the effort of establishing a nonprofit, which is Box Fit, which we were able to fund for that. So that's where the grant dollars came from.
Yeah.
Question I have, the facility you were in, I know you were paying some rent there, but.
Yes, sir.
The arrangement the city had with, had or has with the Melrose Athletic Club, what is the lease agreement that we have with the Melrose Athletic Club?
Well, I wasn't aware of it at the time, but it's like ten dollars a year.
Sorry, Latory, I should have said I wanted to ask the city manager. He may have a better understanding of that, what that is.
The city went through a process where they solicited proposals, just as we did in the project we had just before this one, back years ago, and the agreement at that time was to lease the space for ten dollars, subject to a whole series of conditions and other activities associated with that. Want to be clear, we did not go through a process here.
Right.
We did not open up Norwich for all other nonprofits to seek use of this property, and I think that we, that's important to know, because again, and in the case of the other facility we're talking about, all utilities are paid for by them, none of the utilities, obviously, we transferred, in effect, equivalent of transferring ownership of the Melrose property, but through a lease agreement with that one because there's a stipulation, matter of fact, we're about to come back to you all because we've got an RFP out now on that property, because we're not, we did not renew the lease, and so that one was a little bit different, but it went through a process where all nonprofits have an opportunity to compete for, for that space, that is not what we did here. The instruction of council was to negotiate directly with one user, which is this entity that we've negotiated with, and if the desire ultimately by council was to offer free rent, and we paid for the utilities, then I would recommend that we reopen that item to other nonprofits.
And just one other follow-up question for you, Latory. In addition to the, the grant funding that you have, what additional funding sources do you have right now?
Donors. Donors, my own pocket, my own bank account that funds this program. Since two thousand and seventeen, we've came in and we've changed the lives of over a hundred kids every year in Roanoke City. Starting in southeast, we've came in with the same unified fitness principle, that we're going to make everybody equal, we're going to give everybody the same amount of stuff, whether they paying or not paying. We don't deny anybody services to my program, black, white, purple, candy stripe, I don't care, I train everybody. So in, in, in that instance, we do get a lot of donors that give us five dollars a month, ten dollars a month, because the city does not, the individuals in the city, the citizens, do not have a lot of money to give, but they will, because they're interested in, they're sound petitions, they'll give five, ten dollars, pledge ten dollars a month, and we'll take that, and we'll add money to it and make it work, and that's how I've been making it work.
And one more question. I know some of your programming right now is indoors.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Where, where is that taking place?
Well, I'm working at the Shenador Village, Village of Lincoln, Kirk YMCA, a few other places, but those are the main places that, that we operate. Kids are welcome to come into the YMCA with my program free of charge, as long as they have a Box Fit shirt on.
And that's, that's a, you have like a memorandum of understanding or an agreement with them?
Well, the director over there, can't remember his last name, I'm not really good with last names, his name's Dominique though, he understood what we had going on with my program, he saw me working with the reset team, and he was like, hey man, if you need to use the facility, I can do it. So, and with his generosity, we've been able to, been running for a couple of weeks now, a few weeks now.
Right, thank you.
Anybody else before I ask some questions?
Well, your question, you might want to get.
Well, I just wanted to ask.
I do have some questions, but I'll wait till you're finished.
That, we're given money, well, you've been given a grant of five thousand dollars.
Yes, sir.
To help with the gun violence prevention, with the, with the hope that by young people enrolling in your program will keep them off the streets, and, and I think from what I understand, you all work with kids and you teach them discipline, and a lot of things will come out as a result of that, which is, which is needed today, we need that.
Yes, sir.
And we need, I haven't had a chance to attend one of the boxing events, but, but I was told that the kids that were there comes from areas that, where we need to.
They come from all over. Kids all over that need help.
Okay.
They come from all over. A lot of them come from northwest, a lot of them coming from the housing project areas, but they come from all over. I get kids from all over.
Well, and I would just direct this to Mr. Cobb, is it five thousand? I thought the smallest grant you could get in there was ten thousand.
No, they range from five thousand to ten thousand, and Box Fit received five thousand. And there will be another round of many grants that will, proposal, a request for proposals will go out in January.
If I can add one thing too, on, on top of this, I've been, I'm very thankful, I don't want to seem ungrateful because it's late night and I got a migraine, I don't want to seem too edgy. I very appreciative of you, Joe, Mr. Best Pitch, everybody that's been here, because they have audience for a boxing program, not that many people are interested in, but it does have a lot of applications, and giving kids confidence, discipline, structure, so we kind of have the same, have the same desire. Thank you guys for Norwich. If you can't do anything but the five thousand dollars, forty-eight hundred, I will make it work, I will figure it out, but the ring is going to cost me five thousand dollars to ship it, it's going to be five hundred dollars, so that's fifty-five hundred dollars. I'm going to figure it out, so I'm just saying, if you can't help me, let's just say you can't help me, and I will figure it out, but if you can't help me, please help me, because I need your help.
Well, I'd like to see the program continue, and I'll ask the city managers anything we can do beyond what has already been done to help you keep the doors open and keep, keep.
We don't have it yet, I have the insurance on it, we don't have the building yet. I have the insurance on it, but we do not have the building yet.
Wow.
Have the bills.
Did you, did anybody know your budget or what you needed, was that discussed at any time?
I've gave it to everybody that I think that has money, so, sir, we need money. Our insurance is like five hundred dollars for combatants a month.
Five hundred dollars a month?
Yes, sir.
For insurance?
Yes, sir. This is a combatant's class, a lot of, it's, it's a, this is a, you can opt out, a parent can say, well, I don't want my kids to be in the combative part, but just the exercise and the structure part, and that's fine, but insurance-wise, in a boxing gym, I have to carry all of the insurance for combatants, because it's a boxing gym. So in that way, it costs me five hundred dollars in insurance. Also, travel. Also, travel, gas, equipment. I've got a storage I've had for like five months now. You know what I'm saying? I'm, I'm moving, I've got a truck full of boxing bags. My car is there, you know? Ah, I'm working here. I'm working. I'm working with what I got. I hadn't get it, I haven't get, you haven't given me a lot. I've took it and I've worked a lot with it, you know? And, um, I just ask for help, man. I don't wanna come back down here and ask you. If it's, if it's no, I can take that. But if, if you can help me, please do, because I need it.
Well, I think we need to figure something out and look at the budget. I mean, that's, 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 that's real expensive. $500 just to, just for insurance.
Just for insurance, sir. Out of pocket, sir. Years, sir. For years. We have to make it happen. And when my insurance rolls over, guess what? They tell everybody, hey, you don't have insurance. And then I'll start losing stuff. So.
What were you doing before?
Well, before, I was paying like 250. And they were doing their thing, and it's not for me to speak on. But my thing is, I wanna run a program that I could afford to run. If it's profitable, that's a great thing. But if it's costing me money, it's a limited thing. And it's costing me a lot of money right now. So, I mean, it's gonna be limited. We get into the building, maybe we'll get some supporters. Uh, I'm planning to go to Blue Ridge, Coca-Cola, I'm planning to go to some big guys and ask them, hey, do you wanna decal inside of our ring? Because we need the continued support. All right, you put a decal inside of our ring for the behavioral services. When the kids come in, they see, hey, we can go here. I wanna have a community corner. Hey, this is the community. They got job training, they got this, and we're gonna advertise these services in my gym, in my ring, for, in exchange for support, but also just to help the kids. I mean, ah, I'm just not a good presenter. So, I mean, yeah.
All right, I think we need to, to have further discussion on this, because I think it's, there's some things that we have to consider, especially if we're gonna decide, you want the city to lease this to you.
Yes, sir. And if they can't lease it to me, and give me a subsidized rent, maybe you could write it off now that I'm a nonprofit. Maybe you guys could charge me the 5,000 or 4,800, and then write it off, so I don't have to pay you. Because if I have to pay you, then I'm not charging the kids for the after-school program. I'm not charging them for the parents for the kids camp. I'm not getting any money in, but I'm bleeding out.
All right, uh, I'm gonna call on Ms. Moonrose and any other councilman.
I just wanted to speak to what he just said. And that's all I wanted to ask. Was you mentioned the 5,000. When I asked about the 40, uh, $4,800, I was told that that was the cost of utilities. But I noticed on page three of the commercial lease, under number E, it says the parties agree that the city is responsible for payment of any utility costs or charges. But yet, I'm told, uh, that the rent is the $4,800, which is the utilities.
Correct.
So, if the city's paying it, then he's actually doing the payment.
That's the, there's no other charge for the rental. The rental is-
That's what I'm saying.
The rental, the $4,800 is based off of what the city's cost is for providing utilities for the building.
$4,800 a year?
We are paying for all the utilities.
For light and water?
As part of it. $4,800 a year.
Right. But at the present time, is, is, the rec center is, uh, is just storage.
It has been for storage, but we've been, we've been paying utilities for the storage for, which is a city-
That's what I'm saying.
Right, which is a city use. We don't, we don't offer, we don't offer any build, we don't offer any city buildings to people for free.
Right, I understand that. I understand that.
So, that's, so the $4,800 was, and what I'm explaining, the $4,800 was based on our utility costs. That's all we were trying to recover in this rental fee, is the cost of utilities. Because, and we're not passing that cost on for the utilities, because we're covering those. But that's what it was based on, was the, the cost of utilities.
Well.
All right, let me, I mean, who else wants to speak?
I just have a quick comment.
All right.
I, I think what, what is happening, um, Mr. Cowell, is I think, I know I'm struggling with the fact that, um, Mr. Woodbury is working with a, a part of our demographics that we know are, are, are challenged or, or struggling. And, and we want to try to avoid any further, uh, participation in, in crime or gun violence or anything. And I know he's working with that segment, and I know that we all want to do whatever we can. We're just not sure what that is. I, I, you know, didn't get a chance to look at the agenda, um, and because we were all out of town, it didn't come out until Saturday. And I saw the $4,800. I'm struggling with that, because I just don't know how he would be able to afford that. And our, our intent was to try to help him. So, I agree with the mayor. I don't know what that answer is, but I do think we need to have some further discussion to figure out how we might be able to help Mr. Woodbury with this program. Because we know that it, it is benefiting our community and our kids who are, uh, in that demographic that we are hoping to work with.
And I understand that. That's why we structured the lease that was only trying to cover the utility costs, not any other costs. That's, that's why we structured it. The desire of the council ultimately is to provide a building free to the boxing club with the city covering the utilities. I just need to know that. And understand that is outside of any normal practice that we have done. Because typically, we would make a building available for other nonprofits than to compete for, under those circumstances. Because there may be others that are providing services as well that would like access to the building that we've not reached out to. This was a direct outreach to, to the, to the club, uh, because of the council direction.
Well, I don't think we've heard the word "free" up here.
No, I don't think it's-
Well, it would, it would be, I mean, the-
How about $10?
I've heard, I've heard basically-
How about $10?
The question was-
Hold, hold up, hold up.
Mr. Bestwich has a question, Mayor.
All right, Ms. Bestwich. Oh.
Well, I wanted to ask the city manager, it, it's indicated in the report that the building has really been used only for storage for-
Correct.
A period greater than 10 years, I think. How did we determine that the cost of the utilities would be $4,800 a year?
Michael, you wanna? The building still has utilities on, even though it's not being used.
But I mean, nobody's running the lights all the time.
Correct. The utilities may actually cost more than what they've been used for, for the storage piece, but-
Yeah, the cost of the utilities over the last year, we took an average for that, and it came out to about $400 a month for, uh, water, gas, and electric. And right now, that's just to keep the building, uh, open effectively. So that it doesn't, so the pipes don't burst, and, uh, so that the heat's not on it at any, um, you know, really comfortable range. Water's not used that much. That's just keeping the access to water, keeping access to gas, and making sure the, uh, the lines don't bust.
Keeping access to gas?
Correct. Yeah, so that, that, just keeping the hook up as opposed to shutting it off. I, I believe the heat in the building is, is gas heat, so we have to have the gas built.
So, that's, that's basically what we're paying-
Today.
Today.
Just for storage.
For storage.
Yeah.
So, once it starts getting used, conventional wisdom would tell you that those costs are gonna go up.
Lights will be on more often, probably turn the heat up a little bit, although-
You're gonna go in, you're gonna use the bathroom, you're gonna drink some water.
You don't wanna get the place too hot if you're gonna be in there boxing, because that works up the sweat in itself. Yeah. Okay, I just, I want, just was curious as to where that number came from. Thank you, that's helpful.
Well, let me, uh, and, and Ms. Woodbury, the $10 for real, you know, we did that, we have to, and I think-
I'm just throwing it out there, I heard $10 earlier. It sounds good to me.
But what you have to understand, we have to make that open-
Yes, sir.
To everybody, all the nonprofits. So, we're trying to work with yours, because everybody, when we do that, it'll be a line in to get that. Let me ask, uh, uh, Councilman Cobb, can we ask, or, or do we ask the Gun Violence Prevention Commission to, to look to, probably, in this instance, give them more funds because of the points that were made by the, by the vice mayor and the demographics that he's working with? And we know without a doubt that, that, that those, they, those groups, or those boys-
And girls.
And, and girls come from a neighborhood or come from a demographic that needs help, needs to be doing something, uh, constructive. And, and I think boxing, without a doubt, in terms of what they do and the discipline, all of that comes out in that. Can we do more than five, can y'all do more than $5,000? Is that, how is that determined? Can we do, as a council, ask the commission to look at that? Because this is, this is valuable work, and, and, and so, uh, until we can work something out here, and the council, and I'll ask the city manager, maybe that we can look at some more things to talk about, uh, what can happen. Can the Gun Violence Commission do more than $5,000?
The range of the many grants is $5 to $10,000. And we did that, uh, it, it has to be competitive amongst all the nonprofits who have valuable programs, in addition to the BoxFit program. So, we're in a similar situation to needing to open that up. Um.
How about, how about a request from council that says we define this as a critical need?
Well, I, we can do that. You can certainly do that. And, and I think you will prob, we will probably have other nonprofits, um, coming and asking for the very same thing. And so, we're just trying to be good stewards of the dollars to make sure that they're getting out there the best they can. Um, one thing, the reason I asked, uh, Mr. Woodbury about the why, granted, you don't have space there to put a ring in.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and I don't know about the other places where you're meeting, Shenandoah and-
Uh, Villages at Lincoln.
And Villages at Lincoln. I don't know what their space capacities are.
There's no ring there either.
Uh, is there even space in their big buildings for a ring?
They make, they make, uh, space, but not for a ring, and I wouldn't, uh, I don't wanna impose. I'll take anywhere, but I don't wanna impose my program into anybody's other program, you know? So, I, I, I don't, I don't wanna put a boxing ring up there and they have an art class there or something like that, you know? Because then I'm disrupting what they got going on, and then my services is not gonna be, you know, as valuable or last as long. So, I just don't wanna disrupt anybody, and I, I don't, um, I don't even know really how else to explain it to you guys, besides the fact that, um, we need facility and funding. Funding and facility.
And I understand that. I, I, I also understand that nonprofits are all wrestling for, for dollars to fund their programs. And that's the challenge that we're in right now. But I would suggest that if, it, it sounds like we're wrestling with something, we're trying to work it out up here, and, and we may not get to a resolution. So, I'd, I'd suggest that we take some time to really consider the questions that have been raised tonight, and trying to come up with a, a meaningful solution to sup, to support the program, but also to remind the, the other organizations who are doing, uh, similar, not, they're not doing boxing programs, but they're doing other work that's prevention and intervention-based. And, and we, we wanna make sure that-
I got a question. Can I ask a question?
Well, hold on, let's finish the statement. We'll give you a chance to comment. Uh, and I understand, I understand that, uh, but my position is all nonprofits that are doing certain things, they're not equal, I think. In terms of certain things have more value to us right now. Because we're in a situation where we're having gun violence every day, every day. Now, if I make the case on gun violence, and you can keep some of these youngsters out of that environment, or keep them going. To me, the, some of the other nonprofits, if they can show me where their work is just as critical as what you're doing, because you're dealing with a demographic, and we're talking about gun violence. And we need to get those kids out of those neighborhoods and get them going in an area where, uh, they can relate to people, something positive, they can look forward to.
Understandable.
You know, this, this beats going on a trip. This beats social impact. You're taking people out of a, out of tough environments. And I think we gotta look at that. We gotta give everybody, you know, everybody has to look at it differently. I mean, I'm, I'm appreciative all in all about it, but all of their work is not equal, in my eyes. All right, Ms. Per-
I, I agree with everything that has been said. And definitely, you know, we, we've, we've been talking about this now for quite some time. And youth athletics is something that is sorely needed in order to help young people with all the things that have, you know, already been laid out. So, my question is, uh, because like you say, the hour is getting late, and I believe in game plans. So, my question is, since tonight we have this before us to, uh, agree upon this lease, but I think this question might go to the city attorney. And, um, like I said, I, there's a couple of things I'm thinking of. But my first question is, if we were to vote upon this as it stands tonight, can we come back after some due diligence and perhaps, um, some other, um, methods of, of helping out with the budget, amend the lease agreement?
Well, from what's been heard, you can table this.
Or do you wanna table the whole?
And I just wanna be clear, this also goes to the other matter that- Let's continue. Is this his use of public property? So, it's gonna require a three-fourth vote, which means December 5th is, Ms. Bestwich, are you gonna be present? Which means everyone's gotta vote yes. Or continue that matter to the following.
And that would give us time to, to look at this a little bit deeper. And then the other thing too, um, having worked with nonprofits, a lot of them, and having worked with, uh, athletic programs, I would certainly want to see the opportunity for you to, to, to be able to look at other sources of funding.
Yes, sir.
And I think that's the other piece of this whole quandary that we're in.
Yeah, 'cause I'm not, uh, that vers-
You should not be, no, you should not be stroking any checks out of your, out of your pocket. End of discussion on that. So, I think that it is incumbent upon whomever you have in your corner. If you have a board, if you have some, um, benefactors or other supporters, then I, then I feel like that's, that it is, it's up to us to help you find the funding that you need as we deliberate-
Yeah.
-in this lease agreement. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that will be greatly appreciated. That will help me out a lot.
We'll talk further.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
And are we gonna continue this matter? Do you have a motion?
Can, can I ask another question as well? Because if you choose to continue it, I may need another clarifying question. This is actually a question, um, for the gentleman, which is, since you talked about insurance and the insurance tied with kind of your boxing program, I wanna make sure that it's understood what the insurance requirements are, even if there's no charge for the lease, just to be in a city building.
Yeah, we've met the requirements. I've sent it, I've sent it over to you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure of that.
Yes, sir. I've sent it over to you. Uh, everybody I talked to needs validation of certificate of insurance. So, we have that, been having it.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move that we table this until the December 19th, 2 o'clock meeting.
It's in the public hearing.
2 o'clock or the 7 o'clock?
I don't think we need another public hearing.
So, we're gonna close the public hearing, and then continue with, uh?
Oh, he hasn't closed it. I'm sorry. I'll, I'll withdraw my motion until it's closed, public hearing is closed.
I thought we did. We'll close, we'll close the public hearing.
Okay.
This one more question.
Hi, Ms. Jones.
So, hello. And I, I really appreciate what you're trying to do with, with the kids. Um, but I do have a question. I, I don't know if I missed it, but I haven't seen your budget.
Well, we submitted it about eight months ago. Yeah, it's been around. We can submit it again if you got an email. We'll, we'll send it to you, we'll shoot it to you.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get it to you.
Because that would be great, because that would help understand what, what your needs are gonna be. And for other people to be able to help you out, they need to know what your operating expenses are going to be.
Definitely, definitely.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
All right, well, we're gonna close the public hearing.
Yes, sir.
And now we've done the comments by members of council, and do you have a motion?
I'll move that we table the decision to the December 19th. Did, what is the date?
December 19th at 2?
At 2 o'clock. Uh, let me ask, Mr. Woodbury, is that a meeting you can attend at 2 o'clock? Okay, all right.
What, what time on the 19th? 2 o'clock for me?
A second to motion.
All right, put that, make that a part of our motion.
We had a second down here. We had three seconds, about four seconds.
For a second.
Can I ask a, uh, can I ask a point of clarification, since it's been tabled, since I presume we're tabling it- I presume we're tabling it for a reason? So, is there, is there interest in the council in different terms of the lease? And if so, I'd like to know what those are, so that I can come back here with a different lease.
Well, I, I for one would like to discuss those terms, and that's what we're trying to figure out. I don't know that we're going to be able to come up with terms right now on the dais, and that was the reason for tabling it.
Right, but I kind of need, otherwise, you're going to be, you're going to have a packet that looks exactly like this.
Well-
And if there's a desire for a different lease arrangement, it would help me to have that, even if it's a range or something, because it requires-
But this is what's been advertised as well, for the public hearing. So, if we change it and alter it, we're going to have to have another public hearing.
So, it's a better to maintain? Yes, well, you got to have an alternative.
Well, I think that you're looking at a different approach that would keep the same terms, but help in a different way.
With some funding, I mean, yeah, I'm looking at all the options, yes.
Exactly. That's what I understand council's looking for.
So, not changing the terms, but seeking other funding opportunities for them to-
Exactly.
If you're going to stay with that forty, forty-eight hundred dollars and three percent increase per year.
Annually, right. And, and the ten percent.
And the ten percent for late fees.
Yeah, all of that.
Yeah, all of that is where I have my concerns.
Well, I need to know if the council has those concerns, because again, we need to know whether we need to re-advertise or, or not. Because otherwise, this is going to come back exactly as it is.
Uh, Mr. Council, me personally, I think, just looking at some additional sources of funding, of figuring out a way to do it, because I, I don't think it's unreasonable to ask for the, at least the utilities be paid. I, I do know that, that is probably going to be a challenge for him, so I was just trying to figure out if there's some other funding or some other ways that we might be able to assist with that.
Sure. And I'm just asking, because again, I don't want it, I don't want to come back on the 19th.
Now, that's just my opinion. I don't know if my colleagues agree or not.
In the same situation where you can't act on it, stuffs.
You, you agree? Okay, okay.
I agree on that. I agree on that.
Okay, okay. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Just for the first year, get him something to get him going, to get, to help him succeed.
Okay.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I could raise just one question, just so council-
Yes, sir.
Fully aware and fully transparent, we continued item number fifteen-two, dealing with one point one acres to December 5th at two P.M. However, Mr. Best Pitch will not be present. Are you not here?
I'm here.
Oh, you're here.
No, I'm just saying, when you just said it.
Okay. That would require, that's going to require six votes in order to approve, because you have to have a supermajority under fifteen point two dash twenty-one hundred. You have to have three-fourths of council, and five votes is only seventy-one percent, not seventy-five percent. So, do we want to also continue that when Mr. Best Pitch will be present and move that again to December 19th at two P.M.? Since we're in the same meeting, a motion could be made to conch, amend that previous motion, since we haven't left this council meeting, and move it to the 19th and inform all people involved.
I think that, that gives us some insurance, the fact that he would, would have-
I need another motion.
I saw move that we moved the item on Fishburne Cottage from December the 5th to December the 19th at two o'clock.
I second it.
Don't we need a first motion before we do the second motion? Well, yes. Yes, okay. You're right. Rewind. Okay, here we go. Madam Clerk, call the roll on the first motion.
This is on the BoxFit lease.
Is this one on the BoxFit or it's on Fishburne?
Then you're going to have one on the second.
Okay.
But it's coming.
Sorry, we're tired.
All right. On the BoxFit. Moved by Ms. Moon, and seconded by Mr. Best Pitch?
No, it was backed up. It was by Mr. Cobb, and then it was four seconds, but I'll take that one.
Okay, I will call the roll on that matter.
Yes.
Ms. Sanchez-Jones. Vice Mayor Whiteboy.
Aye.
Mr. Best Pitch.
Aye.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Price.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye. And so, the-
That's BoxFit.
That's BoxFit.
BoxFit. All right, now, we have, they have a motion for the Norwich-
No, Fishburne.
Fishburne, Fishburne Cottage.
I move with respect to the Fishburne College that we, um, Fishburne College, not college.
That we continue that matter as well to December 19th at, is it two P.M.? That we're doing two P.M.
I second.
All right, Madam Clerk, can you call the roll on that? A minute motion.
Okay, I will. I'm going to get this down. Stephanie and Ms. Whiteboy. All right. Ms. Sanchez-Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy.
Aye.
Mr. Best Pitch.
Aye.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Price.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye. And so, on the 19th, we'll have, we'll continue on both of those items.
And we will work with the clerk's office, so that everyone that spoke and the applicants are contacted to let them know that the, that change with that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Then, we'll be continued. We're now down to item sixteen-one, which is a petition for appeal filed by Jamal Sauer, appealing a decision of the Architectural Review Board denying a request to replace a roof on the front porch of the home located at seven oh five Marshall Avenue Southwest. Mr. Sauer, the owner, is the spokesperson. And a report to the, well, all right, so I'll call on Mr. Sauer for opening remarks, and then I'll call on Bill Mason, Chair of the Architecture Review Board, for remarks and discussion by council. So, Mr. Sauer.
Good evening. I appreciate you being here for this long. I am proud of being a citizen of Roanoke. I have been, I have been here since nineteen ninety-eight, twenty-four years. I came with seven dollars in my bucket. I remember Wally, the guy who just spoke, he's been here for one year. I am like twenty-four years forward. I traveled and I made business in many states, but I kept, Roanoke is my main residence. I lived here seven months and in Pennsylvania, five months. And actually, I drove from Pennsylvania today. And I, I make my investment, my real estate investment here in Roanoke. And I own a few properties, and while my family also engaged in gas stations, business, and other businesses. I myself had a convenience store in southeast and in Shenandoah Avenue as well. And I expanded my business for real estate and for the education. I helped many universities in the United States to bring millions of dollars from overseas by recruiting international students to, to them, and including here National College and Roanoke College and many others as well. So, I, I, I take a pride of my being in, in Roanoke as, as I call it home. And so, I, I bought, um, two properties. One of them was seven oh five, after being boarded for many years. And I did a lot of remodeling inside. And in the roof, the front porch roof was completely rusted and leaking down, so the whole porch was completely falling apart. I did not know about, I did not know that the house is in historical district and require some paying attention to the historic H2. Later on, I learned about it. But I made the judgment of replacing the roof, the bad metal roof which I had there, with a shingle roofing for two reasons. The houses across from my house are shingled. So, I made the judgment, they're shingled, so I made it as shingle. So, within one hundred feet dimensions, there is three houses, one exactly seven oh two. I don't know if you have the pictures which I sent this morning. Seven oh two is across from the street, exactly. Six thirty-eight Marshall is just one house below, and seven sixteen is one house there. So, I believe having another, having my house, having a bit of the shingle that I have there, I appreciate the opportunity that you can give me, you gave me the opportunity to come to speak to you, because I know the A R V, they are doing their job of, of making sure that I go through the channels. I came to them two months ago, and I presented my case, which was not approved neither for the metal or the, I just want to mention that after, after the shingle, after I spent money and resources in the shingle, I was stopped by Mr. Musavi to, and told me it has to be in like. In like means I have to put metal. So, I took metal out, I put, I, I went to the metal roofing company in Trotville. I paid so much money for the metal, and for so much money for the labor, again, I put it over the, the, the shingle. Later on, I learned that this is not the right metal, which is galvanized, and it is, I was sold the metal as a metal used for, it's better than, it's long, it lasts longer, and it has galvanized and everything. So, I did put, I put money and resources and labor again for the metal. This cost a lot of money. Then I was told the metal was the wrong metal. So, instead of going to the metal discussions, I just want to show you my efforts on the house. I don't, I don't, it's not my habit to continue losing money by, by just my, it was misunderstanding of which kind of metal. I thought in like means type, same type, same type. I went to the metal roofing factory. It's in Trotville, the huge, yeah. I told him my house, I told him the, I showed him the paper, and he said, "This is good for you." So, I, I bought everything, I got the labor, they did everything. And so, long story short, I did the shing, I did the roofing twice. And it cost me so much money, and I have been not doing anything in the house until I hear from you. If you grant me to, if you approve the shingles, which is now it's below the metal, I will be matching everybody around me. I will not make the area not historical, because it's already have shingles. When I asked Mr. Musavi about the house I bought it in six thirty-eight, he said, "Oh, yes, they went through the city." So, I'm coming, I'm coming to you here for fair treatment like other people and matching the other people.
Okay. Any questions?
I do have a question.
Yes.
So, Mr. Sauer.
Sauer.
Sauer. Um, you, the architectural review agent met with you on March twenty-fifth, and he gave you guidance on what shingles should be used?
Yes.
That was prior to you installing any shingles at all?
No, no. No, no, no. I'm sorry. So, the shingle, when he stopped me, it was the shingle already, the, the roof was already shingled. It was taken out and put shingle. I was stopped with the shingle. That's why in the pictures, you see the shingle already in the, after that, when I, when he met with me, I showed him, I said, "I'm doing like the other house, across the street from me." He said, "Oh, the other house, yes, but they went through the city council and appeal and stuff." So, but at the time, it was still pandemic, was still not comfortable of, you know, because that was, you know, I come to Roanoke for six, seven months, and that's why with my family, I don't want to waste time of waiting, going through the process. So, he said, "We need in like." So, that's when I started the process with the in like. I went to Mr. Frank Roofing, the roofing company in Trotville, and I showed him, and he sold me what he sold me. I put it, and now I have two, two roofs. And it is very hard, you know, not, not, not to be, it's very hard to do it again, by all means and cost and everything. I get this investment is not to continue doing the same thing.
Okay, so let me just, so you had no conversation with anyone from the Architectural Review Board prior to installing those shingles? So, you're saying that no one-
No, yes, yeah.
You had no, so you had no idea that you were installing shingles that were not-
I had no idea.
That were not appropriate?
I have no idea about the shingle was not approved until the shingle was in the tub.
So, so when you got the certificate, I guess, in order to replace them, you weren't told at that time either?
No, at the time, when I got the certificate, it was already, the shingle was there. I put the shingle. I was stopped, that's-
They were already there.
That's, yeah, that's why you see the shingle is not, you know, it need to be trimmed and finished. I was stopped when the shingle was already installed.
Mr. Best Pitch has a question.
All right, thank, Mr. Best Pitch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Mr. Sauer. I hope I'm saying that correctly.
You got it right.
First of all, I want to thank you for making an investment in the old southwest neighborhood.
You're welcome.
You might have heard me mention earlier that I lived there for twenty-seven years in that neighborhood, and historic preservation is very important.
Yes.
My question is, when you purchased the property, you, you talked about how the roof was in such bad shape overall, and I'm sure you had to replace a number of things. What type of roofing was on the porch when you bought the house?
It was metal roofing.
It was metal roofing with raised sections?
To be honest with you, I bought the house without seeing the house. I bought the house through a contractor. Actually, I showed, I, I bought my five hundred thousand dollar house without even seeing it in the-
Well, let's just talk about this.
So, this one, I bought it just to be a-
So, you bought it-
I was not, I was not physically in the location when I bought it.
So, did you see the roof?
Yes.
Before you put, or had someone put on the shingles?
Yes.
So, you knew what that roof looked like?
Yes, I did.
Before?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's my question. Thank you.
But, but on that sense, I know it is metal roofing. That's, that's what I know about it, which kind, that's just to clarify.
Yeah, you know, there's a lot of different kinds of shingles.
Yeah, no, I'm just telling you about what I saw.
I'm just saying, if you, if you say I'm going to replace the shingles that I have with in-kind shingles, and then you get some other type of shingles, that's not in-kind.
I just answered exactly what I understood when you, to, to give you the better answer for me.
Well, I think we need to have an opportunity for the-
All right, does anybody have any questions on Mr. Sauer? All right, then I'm going to ask Mr. Mason to come forward.
Good evening.
Welcome.
I'll try to be brief and appreciate the opportunity to represent the board. So, the applicant tore off standing seam metal roofing, put shingles on. Mr. Musavi, our representative, your city employee, became aware that this had been done, and he went and spoke with the applicant and said, "Hey, you can't, you can't replace your roof without getting approval, number one. Number two, you can't replace a metal roof with shingles without getting approval." So, he's already kind of, you know, made two mistakes, if you will. And he advised him that there's a house across the street that has standing seam metal roof that has been recently done, and we have been approving a lot of standing seam metal roofing. And he said, "You know, if you do it like that, that can be in-kind, and it would be okay." And at this point, he went and he bought five V creme metal roofing, which is a- which is essentially what is, was made to be installed on barns. And the, it is not a standing seam, it is just metal that has some folds in it. And instead of having a hidden fastener under that standing seam, it has screws. And one of the pictures shows it really well, where there are screws penetrating that panel. Those things rust, it's not, it's not a good roof. It doesn't last, and it's not, it's not consistent with your guidelines. And so, in this case, there wasn't, I mean, it was unanimous because it was so clearly not within the, you know, not supportive of the guidelines that, you know, you all have charged us with supporting. And I'm sorry that, once bitten, he wasn't twice shy, because he certainly could have asked Mr. Musavi before he put that metal on that roof, "Hey, is this appropriate?" Question?
Any questions, Mr. Mason? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, council and discussion? Mr. Best Pitch? All right, I'll let you come back, say something.
I'm not here to advocate the metal roof. I'm here to ask for your approval for the shingle roof, like the neighborhood, thank you.
I guess what I want to start my comments is that it's not difficult to find places in old southwest, properties in old southwest, where the wrong material has been used. It's not difficult to find that. In fact, that's the only reason to have an Architectural Review Board. If everybody was replacing the, whatever they need to work on their house to something that looks the same, we wouldn't have to have an Architectural Review Board. Those guys could spend that time every month doing something that they probably would enjoy better. So, that's the reason. I, I'm not sure about how anything was approved or whatever for some other house, but I, I just, as you said, you saw the material, the standing seam metal roof before it came off. You saw it. And I just, it's hard for me to understand how anyone can think that the 5V roof, which I call it shed roofing, I mean, used sometimes on barns, but it's basically, you know, shed roofing, how that's the same as the standing seam metal. It doesn't look like the same thing at all. So, I understand, now you want to take that back off and leave a lot of holes in all the shingles that you have, when the screws have to come out, and basically have a roofing material that is not consistent with what was on the house when you purchased it. So, that's, that's my concern, Mr. Mayor. I think that in-kind means in-kind. The same type of material that was there before. Thank you.
Any other comments from the members of council? All right, have we heard enough to?
There's no other comments, Mr. Mayor. I would move, based upon the evidence, testimony, and documents presented to this council at today's hearing, I move that the decision of the City of Roanoke Architecture Review Board on September 8, 2022 be affirmed, and that no certificate of appropriateness be issued to replace a roof on the front porch of the home located at 705 Marshall Avenue Southwest as set forth in the application for certificate of appropriateness on the ground that the proposed installation and location are not architecturally compatible with the structures or historic landmarks in the H2 district.
Mr. Sauer, all right. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll on that?
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Best Pitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye.
And the motion to, to deny Mr. Sauer is approved. All right. Thank you all, thank you. All right, we're now down to the hearing of citizens upon public matters. Madam Clerk, do we have any citizens here to speak?
Yes, sir, we do. We have three speakers. Dr. Tina Bardari.
I think she's gone.
She's gone. Okay. Joanne Hayden.
Joanne Hayden, she's here.
Okay.
Who is this, who's this coming up?
Joanne Hayden.
Ms. Hayden. I am Joanne Hayden. And I, well, good evening. Mr. Mayor, city council representatives, and other city officials, and citizens of Roanoke. I am representing the Melrose Rugby Neighborhood Forum and Friends of Evans Springs tonight. We would like to share a perspective of Evans Spring that should be important to all citizens. I'm sorry, I don't have my glasses. It's just a little late. I want to be able to see much better, much better. Let's see where I was at. What is Evans Spring? This is our perspective, and we want to share this with you. Evans Springs is a 130-acre property that is located on the southern side of Interstate 581 in Roanoke, Virginia, near Valley View Mall. Evans Spring has several different owners, one of which is Roanoke City. Melrose Rugby Neighborhood Forum and the Friends of Evans Springs are aware that the owners have the right to control their properties. The Roanoke City governing body would probably be pleased if it could use Evans Spring as a way to increase its tax base, and the other owners would definitely enjoy a sizable profit. However, Evans Springs is not just any piece of property. It is an important watershed in the state of Virginia, and is a very unique and special habitat in Roanoke. One of the best ways to experience the beauty and uniqueness of this property is by walking the Lick Run Greenway, which is a pathway into a portion of Evans Spring. Even with the fading colors of autumn, the Greenway remains full of chirping birds and squirrels darting from trees to ground, and the soothing sounds of Lick Run as it winds its way easterly along the path of the Greenway. If the Roanoke City manager, mayor, city council members, and other city officials associated with the possible development of this property have not had the opportunity to walk this unique pathway of nature, we urge you to take the time to experience Evans Spring in its natural state. Roanoke City Parks and Recreation has placed excellent informational stations along the Greenway to share the uniqueness of the Evans Spring area to the citizens of Roanoke, visitors from other cities, states, and places from all around the world. In the book of Genesis, chapter 1, verse 26, "God gave mankind dominion over the earth, the animals, plants, and other organisms." Evans Springs is a very small part of this vast earth with its living organisms, which should be considered an important gift to mankind in Roanoke, Virginia. The Melrose Rugby Neighborhood Forum and the Friends of Evans Springs are encouraging Roanoke City Council to place a high priority on protecting the neighborhoods that will be directly affected by the development of Evans Springs, as well as maintaining Evans Springs' uniqueness and beauty. The story of Evans Spring should not be one that ends with the following sentences. "The trees, animals, and other organizations were," I'm sorry, organisms, "were destroyed. The earth was dug up. The towering bridge was built. The earth was paved over. A tube of concrete became the home of Lick Run. And unfortunately, Evans Spring, our special gift, was lost to the future generations." I thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Barbara Dirk.
Thank you for letting me speak during this citizen comment. Roanoke is a welcoming city. A great demonstration of our love and unity will come to fruition tomorrow night, the Tuesday before Thanksgiving. There's an annual Thanksgiving worship service and fellowship and for our commu, fellowship for our community at 6:00 PM Tuesday, tomorrow, November the 22, at Bethany Christian Church located at 3115 Fleming Avenue in northwest Roanoke. The preacher for this community worship service is Reverend Dr. Amy Christine Hodge, pastor of Roanoke Mount Zion AME Church. Thirteen churches have come together to, to sponsor this, this service of unity and love. They include Mount Zion AME, Colonial Presbyterian, Calvary Baptist, Williams Memorial Baptist, Loudon Avenue and Bethany Christian Churches, Sweet Union and Colonial Avenue Baptist Churches, West Hampton Christian, Green Memorial, United Methodist, St. Paul's United Methodist, Forest Park Churches, and Central Church of the Brethren. The public and you are invited to attend this unity service tomorrow, 6 o'clock, at Bethany Christian Church, 3115 Fleming Avenue Northwest. I look forward to seeing you there.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers, Madam Clerk?
No, that was the last speaker.
Thank you so much. And Ms. Hayden, I will just say, I walked the Greenway this morning. It was about 28 degrees from Target all the way to Lincoln Terrace. And it was cold, but I did, I do it often. But anyway, if there is no other, get ready to.
Yeah, there's some other business. Let me do two things that probably you should have done earlier, but three things, really. I want to congratulate Honorable Joseph Cobb and the Honorable Vivian Sanchez Jones for their winning the election. So, congratulations, both of you for.
Thank you, sir.
I also want to recognize Ms. Stephanie Moon Reynolds, who was elected to the National Black Caucus of Locally-Elected Officials Board of Directors. And this appointment was done at the National League, National, NLC, National League. NLC, I don't know why. Getting old, man. But this was done at the NLC National League Cities, and we're proud of that, and that's the organization that I, I know that Councilwoman Price and I belonged to for a number of years. NBC Leo, as they call it. So, congratulations, Ms. Moon Reynolds, on your election to the Board of Directors. And so, with that being said, there's no further business. This meeting is in recess until Tuesday, November 29, 2022. At 8:30 AM, we'll be meeting at the Melrose Library for our council budget planning retreat. Thank you all.
Thank you.